Soon as that's set. And it's streaming, so you should be good.
All right, great, thank you, Colleen. So, welcome everyone who's watching and participating. This is the work session before our regular town council meeting, which will begin at 7:30. It's potentially a big agenda, but not long. So Rob, why don't you sort of talk to us about, I mean, the big thing on the agenda, of course, is the budget. Item 7A, our public hearing.
The big item on the agenda is the public hearing and potential possible adoption, potential, that possible adoption, final adoption of the operating budget for the next fiscal year. We had talked at a previous hearing about whether or not the council saw virtue in sort of postponing final adoption. Nothing since that last meeting has really transpired that would give us any reason to believe that not adopting the budget tonight will give us better insight or better information. Pretty much going to be where we are tonight, two weeks out from now. The governor's office has announced an intention to begin looking at the impact on state revenues and therefore the potential impact on municipal revenues. But that exercise hasn't really even begun. And we don't, we don't anticipate that it's going to be done in the next two weeks. We think that's going to be a process that takes quite a bit of time. So, you know, speaking to the folks in the finance department, sort of puzzling through where we are. It's better to have a plan for the next fiscal year than it is not to have a plan. We may have to make adjustments as we've, we've talked about before. This year's operating budget is going to be different than any other year we've ever seen. We've got more unknowns than we've ever had. There are questions, Linda, when she joins us tonight during the public hearing, will describe some of the uncertainties that the schools have confronting them over the course of the next 12 months. Everything from what do you do if you need to have more sinks and cleaning, hand cleaning stations in each of the buildings? What if social distancing requires that students be spread out across more schools, potentially even South Road gets pulled back in because we need to keep the density of the school, the classrooms down. There's all sorts of issues that we just, we just haven't got a good handle on and will not have a good handle on. That having been said, having a plan to go forward on is better than just being out there. You know, with nothing. Further, there has been, there have been a number of municipalities that have been pursuing the idea of simply continuing with their tax levy as established under the 1920 budget for an additional quarter to give them the time to get a new budget, a three-quarter of a year budget in place. But the conversations with the governor's office have yielded concern that that may not be something that can be done by executive order by the governor. It may be something that has to be done, if it can be done, by the legislature. So we're not in a position where we're going to be able to pursue that strategy either. As, as we suggested when we presented our initial thoughts on amendments to the preliminary budget. We still think that we're better off sort of getting to that steady funding for the first quarter for the next four. We think that the, the logic behind looking for a levy extension for one quarter really should apply for the entire year. So that's what the, the amendment would do, amendments would do. We're prepared tonight to sort of walk the council through the amendments as they were presented at the last hearing. Give you an overview of the budget as it was preliminarily adopted. And then we're prepared to talk to the council about the budget petition that has been filed. We've worked with Mary Ann and Linda to see if there are elements of that budget concept, that budget design that makes sense. And there are some things that we can do that we probably wouldn't have done if somebody hadn't, you know, sort of asked us to rethink the proposal that we made on the 15th and 16th. The big shift here is that Linda has suggested that the schools can give back the transportation monies this year. If the issue is, you know, just not getting a double dip, not getting the transportation money and a increase in the property tax transfer, they're willing to send back the transportation savings from this year. Take the property tax transfer this year and then work with us to take advantage of the fact that this was the last of the 10 years in the fund decline or the reduction in state revenues. So this year, you'll remember that the state revenue decline for the schools was $700,000. So their $1 million request for a property tax transfer above what last year's number was is really equal to making up the $700,000 that they lost with the state revenue plus $300,000. We think that with the $700,000 going away next year, we should be able to keep their program stable if we simply go with a $300,000 property tax transfer next year. So the million dollar transfer that we're going to need or the additional million dollars that we're going to need this year would be paid for by the schools. And then the money is necessary to keep us from having a spike in the tax rate or in the tax levy next year would be paid for by the town. And by the savings that the, we're going to, we're going to recognize or the sort of implicit savings we're going to recognize from the structural change in the schools' revenue streams next year. I'm going to stop there because that's an awful lot to digest and we have a first bite at the discussion right now. Any thoughts or questions about what we're outlining now?
All right. Yeah. A couple of questions, Abel, if I may, Joe Veeley. So I, we know that the town is also going to see a decrease in revenue sharing from the state just in the hotel or room tax and the meal tax. So there, I mean, I, I think that we've got some real challenges. I'm not, also not convinced that the Department of, Rhode Island Department of Education is going to be in a position next year financially with the revenue that the state is looking to lose. I'm not sure they're going to be in a position to fund us even at the levels of this year. It's an unknown though, right? So they could do that and what you just described is less of an impact, but if they see a dramatic decrease in revenues like they're seeing now, I, I think the estimate I heard was just from the casinos, it's a million dollars away that the state is not seeing. I'm not even, I'm not sure that any state revenue share to the town or the school department is anywhere near guaranteed. And I, I think that this council needs to prepare for that possibility. If we're wrong and the money comes, I want to be wrong that way. So the, I mean, that's my two cents on the state revenue part. The, I mean, the other things that you talked about were the, the transportation money and funding the property tax transfer out of the undesignated fund and, and I, I think I've made my, my opinion clear on those. So I'll, I'll let others speak at this point.
This is Bryant speaking. I agree with Joe regarding the undesignated funds. I don't want to touch the undesignated funds at the present time. I think what I would feel more comfortable with is holding on to our undesignated funds because in six months' time or nine months' time, we don't know what our collection rate is going to be. We don't know what the economy is going to look like. The other thing that I was just thinking about though, when you mentioned the school department giving the savings back to the town from this year, from the transportation budget.
Right.
Is that because it's better to have the increase now so that next year you're at a different point rather than dipping into your, let's say, let's say they keep the funds dipping into their undesignated funds to make their budget work this year. I think there's a little bit of confusion there for me.
There's a couple of things. At first, I, I want to point out that doing what we're suggesting actually gets us to not expending town undesignated funds this year. That's, that's a big part of why it's been designed that way. By having the schools pay for this year's holding down of, of property tax, by having the schools with their savings and transportation pay for the property tax relief and keeping us at a zero. That leaves the undesignated fund balance for the town at $13.5 million just in case something happens. So that's actually one of the features of, of this, I'll call it a compromise, if you will, this, this rethought process. And it was one of the reasons why the money coming back made sense and why the conversation led us to having that there because it gives us on our side greater flexibility. Those, that, that million dollars isn't in the school fund for dealing with whatever they want to deal with. It's in the, it's part of, it remains the $13.5 million in the town undesignated fund. So if we have a decline in, in tax payments, we have a tool to deal with it. And as, as we discussed last time around, we're still north of 16% and we'll be north of 16% if we, if we pursue the strategy that is taking shape in this conversation. If we go with the school giving the transportation money to the town, the town using those to offset the reduction in property tax revenue. Instead of using our own undesignated funds, leaving our own designated funds in the pot so that they're available to us throughout the year does have an advantage. It is advantageous to us to do that. It's also more likely, not, not guaranteed by any stretch of the imagination, but it's more likely that the federal and state, state relief for municipalities is going to come on the education side than on the highway side or on the recreation department side. So we're more likely to see others backstopping municipalities. We're not alone in this situation at all. And we're more likely to see backstops coming in the form of federal and state assistance to schools than we are to see it as, that nobody's going to help us replenish our undesignated fund balance. They may backstop extraordinary expenses like sinks for kindergarteners. That kind of thing is, is more likely. In terms of whether there is an advantage strategic or some, some sort of advantage to the town to, I'm sorry, to the schools having us provide a property tax transfer this year. The answer is yes. There is some because we're setting the new base for maintenance of level if we're using the previous year's PTT as the base for maintenance of, of effort. So yes, it goes up by a million dollars because we've given them a million dollars this year and then next year. So let's take our number 54.9 is their current property tax transfer in fiscal 1920. If we pursue this strategy, then they will be at 55.9 in 2021. That's where they'd start the, the analysis in 2021. Now, that seems like a big deal, but if you look at 2021, of the effect not on the PTT but on taxes, it's not as big a deal. Because no matter how they pay for a million dollars worth of services neck, this year, that million dollars worth of services will be the base for next year, maybe not the PTT analytical base, but that need doesn't go away just because the transportation savings are no longer available to them in the next fiscal year. So that need continues and you do inflation on the need. So if you run the inflationary number on that million dollars, they're going to be at a, about the same place anyway. However, in the course of our thinking through this, we also recognize that we're probably not looking at a million dollars plus a 2% inflationary growth on that million dollars because again, the state's monies are stable. We are not anticipating. And we have every reason to believe that the governor, the state legislature, the teachers union, everybody involved in education finance policy in Rhode Island and not just Rhode Island. But everyone involved in education finance policy has an interest in making sure that we're not going to completely sink the ship. So I, I think that we stand a decent chance of seeing the state monies at the bottom. And remember, we're down to 4 million plus in state aid in South Kingstown anyway. We are at the very bottom of the trough, trough set up by that funding formula. So if they're going to stick with the bottom number, then we're fine. We're going to be essentially not digging another $700,000 hole next year. And then our, our inflationary calculation is run against not $700,000 plus the inflation you need to get to cover the costs associated with pay raises, et cetera. It's $700,000 minus $700,000 because that nets out and it's the $300,000 plus the program reforms that Linda has committed to working toward in the next year. So it is a better strategy for us. It leaves us in the same place with regard to PTT. And it puts us in a better place with regard to tax, potential tax liability over what the manager's proposal had been and over what the the petition proposes. The petition improves the PTT increase in one year. It's worse in the second year because we step up, we go one year 2%, one year 2%. They spike at 4% on PP, PTT. They also spike on 4% on taxes as we did with our, our initial amendment proposal. I think the proposal we're going to suggest to you tonight, the, the deal, if you will, or the, the discussion we've been having with the schools is better because it preserves our undesignated fund balance for a year. It doesn't give the schools sort of a double dip. It allows us to step in the increases over the two-year period and it actually gets us to a lower tax liability in the year when we start raising taxes again. It's a lot, I'm telling you.
So Rob, what's the guarantee that they're actually going to realize the million plus in savings?
The bus company's been informed and they're just, it's, it's, it's a done deal. They're not going back to school.
I guess what I'm referring to is I don't know their busing contract. Are they, is there any?
We haven't paid. I, this is actually one of the unspoken aspects of this whole thing. They haven't paid the bus contract, so they're just not going to make the payment. And second, we've not made the property tax transfer to cover the bus payment. So we're really not moving money around nearly as much as it sounds. We're just accounting for it. We've not given the money to them to give to the bus company.
If the bus company then turn around and sue the school department?
They could, but they haven't got a, a contract that allows them to do this. There's a force, force measure clause in the contract that says if we're not, if we're not able to perform, then you don't have to pay. And they're not able to perform because there are no kids. Further, it would be a very difficult, Mike's on the line, so Mike can, Mike can talk to this better than I can, but it would be a difficult suit to, to pursue and, and succeed on because it would result in undue or unfair enrichment. They haven't been paying their bus drivers. So we'd be literally paying for nothing. They wouldn't be paying anybody. It would be enriching the members of the management team and the, and the ownership group.
Rob was a lawyer in one of his former lives and I agree with what he said about the unjust enrichment defense that we would have. I'm not really worried about it.
So Rob, one other quick question. You and I talked about it this morning. Can you explain to the council what true level funding would look like?
I'm not following the, the.
You know, to get, like, you know, we're talking about taking away potentially with this petition a million, but also to truly have a zero level fund, you'd have to actually take 2 million from their budget, correct?
So it depends on how you look at these problems, all of these things. I mean, budget stuff and, and you know, municipal finance, government finance is quite often just a matter of perspective. I, true level funding depends on what perspective. I mean, the, the concept of a true level fund depends on what perspective you take. So what the state law requires is that the municipality, every town, every city and every school district provide the same level of funding to its school committee as it provided in the previous year. There are some exceptions. If the state increases your aid, then you can decline the municipal contribution in, in relation to the state aid. We're not in that situation. They're not increasing our aid. They haven't increased our aid. There's also an exception for municipalities that have a declining student population. If you've got a declining student population, then you may, but you are not required to. You may calculate your level of effort based on a per pupil calculation. So in that case, in our, in our numbers, using rough math here, if we have a $54.9 million property tax transfer, that's our level of effort in 1920. And let's assume, I don't know these numbers well enough to, to actually do anything other than assume. Let's assume we've got 2,800 students. If you lost 20 students next year, then your number would not be 54.9 divided by 2,800, it would be 50 nine divide, times, times at that point, 2780. That would be the way you do the math on that. So that would be level funding using that funding calculation, but it's not a state mandated calculation. It's a state permitted calculation.
Right. And it wouldn't necessarily be good for their budget. It was just something.
No, you, I mean, when you have significant declines, the impact can be substantial. It can, it can really undermine the funding for a, a school program. Yes. All right. We'll try, we've got some graphics and we've got some notes and we'll talk about that at some length this evening. The other big piece of business to be done on the budget side is the outside agencies, the human services and outside agency contributions. I'm actually going to ask Amy to jump in. I spent some time this afternoon reviewing it. My recollection and my calculations this afternoon is that you've covered or you've got enough money in the proposed allocation to cover all of the requests that have been made. So Amy, correct me if I've got that wrong.
Good evening, everyone. Amy Reiner, Director of Administrative Services. So let me pull up my file. So in the proposed budget, town manager proposed Some of that is as committed and some of that is as available. There's 100, excuse me, there's $36,120 as committed, proposed. And as uncommitted, there's 124.50. So if you add all of that up, you have the 156,570. However, we've received an increase in the amount of funding requests inclusive of the two new requesting organizations. The two new, excuse me, the total requested is 169,570. So there's a difference of about $13,000 that based on the requests from the organizations, you would either need to reduce the amount of their request in allocated funds or you would need to increase the amount over what the town manager has proposed in order to meet all of their requests. So there's that difference of 13,272. If the council wanted to consider funding just the organizations that we provided funding to in the current fiscal year and not consider the two new organizations, the two new organizations requested a total of $9,500. So you would still be a little bit over, but it would be less. So again, based on what the council wants to do, you know, we do have quite a lot of, of funding available, but not quite as much as what, what the organizations have requested. We're about $13,000 over what's been proposed.
So we're coming up at 7:30. We, we can have this discussion during the hearing. But Amy, does that not include the, the Easter seal line item? Cause I, I.
So Easter seals did not submit a funding request this year. I'm not sure why that would be showing up. They, they have not.
Okay. All right. So we'll go through it when we get there. We look then to be about $3,500 short on total funding.
No, there's about $13,000.
Yeah, but let's, let's take the two new ones and put them aside first.
Sure.
Put the two ones aside.
So the two new, the two new organizations, if we back those out, we would still be about $3,500 more in requesting, in requested funding. If the council recalls, the VFW came in a little bit late and with a request for about $6,000. So in our early discussions, we did have about $3,000 that we would be able to distribute, but with their request that pushed us a little bit over.
Amy, what are the two new, the two new organizations, remind me?
The two new organizations are, both did come to speak. One is the South Kingstown Village Trust. Mr. Mari Gates came to speak. The other is the South County History Center. Ms. Joanne Pope Mellish came to speak, the board chair. They requested $6,500 and the village trust requested 3,000. I will note however, the village trust did not submit a funding request application this year. The council has adopted a, a policy outlining the requirements in order to receive funding, submission of an application and 990 and, and all of that is required.
And the, and the village trust was looking for a little bit of seed money in order to go out and get additional money. And if I remember, Joanne Mellish's group was looking for money to preserve historical artifacts.
Correct.
That's correct.
Joe Veeley here. I think we requested that Mari come back with a plan and I don't.
We did. Debbie Kelso here. We did ask him to come back and, and we haven't seen that. So we probably shouldn't move on that one. But the South County History Center, that was a one-time request, correct? They needed it once.
Yes, they have a specific.
Right. A mission for that money, not, not a constant funding source.
Correct. Yeah. There was a specific project they were going to use that for.
If the council's objective is to fund everybody, then we have to find $10,000 to sort of move around in that group or, or move from another location.
Let's discuss that when we get to the public hearing because at this point we've gotten to 7:31 PM. Susan, if you would get the recording ready, that would be great.
You are all set. You are recording.
All right. Perfect. Thank you very much. Hello, welcome everybody to this meeting of the South Kingstown Town Council. It is Monday, April 27th. Time is 7:30 PM. Our first order of business as always is the pledge to the flag. Susan, if you wouldn't mind doing the honors again, I would appreciate that. If anybody else, please mute.
Do we have a flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Thank you very much. And will the clerk please take the role?
Council President Collins.
Here.
Council Vice President De Cruz.
Here.
Councilwoman Kelso.
Here.
Councilman McIntee.
Here.
And Councilman Veely.
Here.
All members are present.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Uh, one thing, uh, again, we're making our way through, uh, these strange times by using Zoom. So I just want to remind everybody to, uh, try to identify yourselves, uh, when you start speaking, because there are going to be people on the, on the meeting who cannot see us. For folks, uh, listening at home, I'll go over some of these things later on, but when you want to raise your hand to be recognized, you press star nine if you're on your phone and then star six to unmute yourself. If you're watching via Zoom, uh, there, if you see that list of participants, there's a little box in the bottom right-hand corner which says, uh, raise hand. That's how, uh, you would raise your hand to be recognized, to speak. We're going to have a couple of opportunities for public comment and we'll get to those as we go. One thing about, uh, voting, uh, different from the last meeting that we did this, we're going to do every vote as a roll call though, uh, just for the purposes of recording, uh, these things for, uh, the public record. Okay. We'll get underway with, uh, with other things. Item four on the agenda is the approval of minutes of previous meetings. Right here, motion.
I'll make a motion to approve item number four, uh, minutes from previous meetings.
Second.
And we have a motion in a second. Uh, Susan, will you, uh, take the role? You're muted.
Silly me. Council President Collins.
Aye.
Council Vice President De Cruz.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kelso.
Aye.
Councilman McIntee.
Aye.
Councilman Veely.
Aye.
The vote is unanimous.
Thank you. Item five on the agenda is the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Give a motion in a second.
Abel, Abel, could you just identify with each motion and second who it was?
Yes. Uh, that was Rory who made the motion and Deb who, uh, seconded it. Uh, will the clerk take the role?
Council President Collins.
Aye.
Council Vice President De Cruz.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kelso.
Aye.
Councilman McIntee.
Aye.
Councilman Veely.
Aye.
The vote is unanimous.
And that brings us, uh, very quickly to item seven on the agenda, which is our public hearing, a public hearing relative to adoption of the town council's final fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget as shown on exhibit one of the agenda. And to consider the following petition filed pursuant to effect section 4222 of the town charter entitled Budget C petitions to the council, uh, seeking to amend the town council's preliminary FY 2020 slash 2021 budget adopted on Monday, March 23rd, 2020. And it reads as shall line item number 011098-41210 entitled Property Tax Transfer to the School Fund and the Amount of $55,994,773 be reduced by the sum of $1,097,937 to the amount of $54,896,836 for the purpose of reducing property tax. And, uh, there's a list of emails that's linked to on the agenda relative to this public hearing. Uh, we've received those. Uh, we've received, uh, more communications in the interim. Uh, if the clerk would just recognize those communications now, that'd be great.
Communications that were received and are reflected on item eight I of the agenda concerning the budget from Louis Arnold, John F. Woodard Senior, Lauren Weinstein, Christine Gage, Martha Bedezen, Jason Ralph, John Broat, Greg Sweet, Carol Jurzick, Lisa Herbert, Tahoma Demato, Barry Alifson, Amy Blakely, Susanna Vasquez, Onna Holland, Laura Frye, Richard Morrissey, Deb and CJ Bergner, Patricia McGrath, Kate Collins, Keila Carvalho, Pam Bennett, Justine Ray, David Furnaro, Mary J. Scott and Emil D. Jorzinski, Scott Haskell, Ronald Martin, Rebecca Blakeney, Bill Huggins, and email address k i r 3310 AOL dot com, no name attached to the letter. Teresa Saunders and Tara Schultz. In addition, subsequent to the agenda's publication, we received additional emails regarding the budget from Abby Colby Cooper, Anne Terry, Bethany De Palma, Bob Hackey, Carrie Brown, Sherry Taylor, Kristen Jo Tureal Day, Christina Scott Palmieri, Christine Fish, Colleen Roach, David Richardson, Debbie Vanoy, Eileen A. Dyer, Elizabeth Hoy, Emily Totten, Eric Hoy, Fern Bergerson, James Corcoran, Jason Ralph, Jean Congdon, Jennifer Lynn Perkins-Demetric, Jessica Rose, Jill O'Sullivan, Karen McLean, Kathleen Westerveld, Kelly Young, L. Clausen, Louis Arnold, Linda Meniski, Lou Kristowski, Doug Shapiro, Mary Ellen Walsh, Mary S. Carlson, Megan Cadman, Paul M. Hagerty, the Peacedale Leadership Council, Poppy Champlin, Priscilla Williams, Richard T. Dyer, Roberta J. MoHolland, Robin Wildman, Sarah Hackey, Sharon Rose, Susan Rockford, Andrew Spats, Susan Sax, E. Martin Stutchfield, Tara Apperson, and Taylor Ellis. And we also received a letter of apology from Stephanie Cantor regarding the budget.
All right. This is Abel. Thank you for, uh, that, uh, Susan. Clearly a lot of interest in the budget, uh, process this year. And I want to thank everybody for sending all those letters and for engaging throughout our public hearing process. And obviously a lot of people on the meeting tonight. Uh, we will get to public comment. Uh, before we get there, uh, I know that Rob has, uh, been in discussions with Linda Savistano, the new superintendent. I don't know if she's, uh, on the meeting as well. I thought she might want to present some of the things in tandem with you, Rob. But if not, Rob, if you want to start us off, uh, please do.
That's great. And Colleen, if, um, I could ask you to look for Linda and Zach. I'd, I'd like to bring them in as presenters at this point.
So I have Linda and we will bring her in. And I, I don't see Zach's. Information right now?
Okay.
So as soon as I do, I will.
That's great. So first of all, I want to start by, by expressing my appreciation and, um, my, my appreciation for everyone who has contacted my office and, uh, shared their thoughts about this budget. This is an unusual, a very unusual, uh, budget year. And, uh, we're trying to do things that really we've never done before. Uh, and we're trying to do them in probably the most uncertain environment for municipalities, certainly, you know, in the last 50, 60, 70 years. This is a very, very different, uh, year for this community. It's a very different year for us in preparing a budget. And everyone has, has come with, uh, ideas that they've been, uh, puzzling through and, and trying to, uh, understand why, you know, we've designed things the way we've designed them. And the conversation has improved, I think, the way that we've been thinking about the challenges we face over the course of the next year and beyond that. Uh, so this is just a summary of some of the issues that, uh, have come up. I'd also like to point out that, uh, when this, uh, petition, which is on the agenda for the council to consider tonight, came to our attention, um, Zach and I sat down with Linda and Mary Ann Crawford over at the school department and really started to think hard about what we could do to achieve stability in the programs, achieve, uh, a good base for continuing the operations, uh, for all of the town and school departments have a zero tax increase, uh, for the taxpayers, because we recognize that adding tax burden right now is not the right thing for the economy. It's not the right thing for our citizens. And at the same time, make sure that we are moving toward a better fiscal and programmatic environment in the out years. Um, we shouldn't be entirely focused on this one year. This is an unusual year. This is a crisis year. It is a year in which we are going to have to do things different than we've done them in the past. We're going to have to defiate from standard practice. We may not be able to pursue, uh, best practice in some instances because of the unusual circumstances that we're going to face over the course of the next year. But we can't be totally fixated on the one year. We're going to have to figure out how to set ourselves up so that the community, uh, can rebound and can recuperate from, uh, the events of the COVID-19 era. Uh, so with that, I'm, I'm going to jump in and, uh, provide just a quick overview of where we were with the budget as it was adopted by the council, as presented, uh, by the, and the managers proposed and then adopted as the preliminary budget. Uh, the highlighted areas are really just things that I think folks, um, you know, probably have more interest than, than, um, some of the other items. Uh, the key on this page is that the general fund as we proposed, uh, was going to increase by 1.3 million dollars. That's all of the items on this page that you see. It does not include the school budget and it does not include the, um, enterprise budgets, the wastewater and water, uh, programs, for example. Those budgets, um, the special, uh, revenue, uh, budgets are here. The key elements here are that, uh, the school budget had a slight increase, proposed slight increase. And, uh, really the total budget, uh, increase is 2.37 for expenditures. Now we were expecting some revenue increases and this is certainly up in the air at this point. We don't necessarily, uh, feel as comfortable with the idea that we're going to see, uh, increases in, uh, state revenue. Although the overall state revenue, even as, as we presented it, was going to decline. Uh, we did see, we did anticipate some increases in state revenue and things like the meals and beverage tax, uh, share that we receive and, uh, the hotel, uh, tax portion that we receive. We did project as part of these numbers, um, an increase in those areas. And that's certainly, um, if not completely off the table, certainly not a guarantee at this point. Uh, we have spoken to folks, uh, with the state. Uh, the governor's office is working on trying to figure out how to ensure revenue stabilization for municipalities. It's going to be some time before we understand exactly, uh, what the state's ability to do that is going to be. You know, this is sort of backstops on backstops. We've got, uh, the state trying to figure out how to hold harmless this, the municipalities from reductions in the revenues that they had published as their preliminary projection of where we would be next year. And the feds are, are sort of backstopping, uh, the states on this. We simply don't know where we're ultimately going to be. Um, one of the items that we will, uh, work through tonight is funding for human services and outside agencies. Uh, this was, uh, where we were when we passed the budget preliminarily earlier in the month. There are a couple of new proposals, uh, that, uh, this is just a historical slide showing us where we have been. There are a couple of new agencies that, um, that we have that we've never had before. The issue really tonight ends up being about a $10,000 difference between the requests on this page and the funding that is available for those agencies without, um, going to another revenue source. And we're prepared to have that conversation with the council tonight. Uh, the proposed amendments, as we laid them out at the last public hearing are these. Uh, there were two amendments to the budget that we were recommending. The first is to replace the revenue that we were previously asking for from property taxpayers. Previously, we had asked for a 1.6% increase over the property tax levy or, uh, property tax rate, I'm sorry, that we were going to, uh, be levying. And that would have resulted in about $900,000 more than, uh, we would be getting if we go to a zero property tax increase. When it became apparent that the community was going to be suffering economic losses, the idea that we would have a property tax increase in this time of uncertainty certainly was one of the first things we recognized needed to be changed in this budget. And the easiest, uh, it's not just a matter of being expedient, but the easiest way to do that is to go to the undesignated fund balance, which are monies that are set aside for dealing with difficulties, catastrophes in the community. Uh, we've heard folks talk about them as sort of the hurricane fund. They're there for all sorts of problems that arise in the community. We set money aside in case we need it because of some sort of natural or man-made disaster. Uh, this pandemic is certainly, uh, in line with the sorts of disasters that those accounts are typically used to cover. I'll also point out that this is not an unusual practice, or it's not a practice that's out of line with well-established policy here in South Kingstown. In South Kingstown, we have an established policy that says we maintain an undesignated fund balance of between 10 and 17% of our operating budget. This year, right now, as, as we're speaking, our undesignated fund balance is just, just a little bit more than 16%. And by tapping the undesignated fund balance as proposed in this amendment, we will reduce that to just over 14%. We are well within our established policy. And we are well within established practice as well. After the financial crisis in 2008, nine, we saw this level of, uh, undesignated fund balance tapped for this exact same purpose to make sure that we were not overburning taxpayers at a time when the economy made it hard for people to make ends meet. So the original proposal we made here on the 15th and 16th was designed to shift funds from the undesignated fund balance to the program so that we would not have to ask taxpayers to pay more in taxes next year. Under this amendment, no one in South Kingstown will pay more in taxes than they paid last year. And that's true for commercial and residential properties. The only exception, uh, for whether or not you'd have any increase in your tax bill is whether you've improved your property. If you've added, you know, a big addition which changed the value of the property, you're going to pay on the whole value of the property, not just the existing. not just the existing, pre-existing, the prior structure. But other than that, tax bills, because this is not a revaluation year, will be the same this year under this amendment as they were last year. That, by the way, is one of the features that this proposed amendment we made and the petition as submitted have in common. They're both designed to make sure that there is a zero percent tax increase next year. Is it prudent to use the undesignated fund balance? I've talked about that to some extent. I will say that we also do have, as I'll describe in a later slide, we do have some reasonable expectation of future savings. We've been in a period of reduced state aid to education in South Kingstown and we're at the end of the ten-year period in which the state was making adjustments to the resources provided to South Kingstown. So we're at the bottom of the trough on the cuts that the state was making to our education program. And that does put us in a better position, not this year, but next year. This year, we had a seven hundred and fifty, I'm sorry, a seven hundred thousand dollar hole created by the withdrawal of state revenues for education from our revenue streams. That will not happen if the state complies with state law next year. This is also just a chart describing where we've been in the last few years. I will point out that this, these numbers are higher in the five years depicted on the chart than they would have been in the five years preceding the chart. There's been a very, very focused attempt in the last few years and the last couple before that to increase our undesignated fund balance. I think it is important for us to maintain our fund balance. It's something we try to do because you know when you need the money, it needs to be there. I will also point out that, given where we are on undesignated fund balance in South Kingstown, what we've proposed in the original amendment would not be sort of our last, our last opportunity to deal with problems as they arise in in the community. Over the course of the year, we could, if necessary, we're not anticipating it, but if necessary, we could seek a supplemental appropriation from this undesignated fund balance and still stay within our ten percent and well above, I would argue, our ten percent policy floor. We will not be in jeopardy of really going below that floor unless some very unanticipated things happen. We've, we've tried to think through everything that could go wrong and Linda's going to give us a list of some things she worries about. There are a lot of things that could go wrong. The state revenue could go bad on us. We could see the economy truly just suffer for months and months. There, there could be a whole lot of bad things that happen. If that happens, the two or the three million dollars that we're talking about on undesignated fund, right now I'm talking a million dollars, but the cushion that we've got beyond that is still another three. If we, if we are looking at three million dollars being the thing that is going to make or break, then the world is a lot worse off than than anything we can anticipate right now. And it's not likely that that level of economic disruption is going to be navigated well just because we have an extra million dollars here or there. These are much bigger forces at that point than than what we're going to be able to manage with this tool alone. If we get into that environment, then we're going to have to think about contingencies like letting personnel go and this sort of thing. I will point out, one of the things that that, before I move from this slide, one of the things that we have been asked a lot over the course of the last couple of weeks is why haven't you laid people off? Why, why are we still, you know, keeping everybody fully employed? And one of the reasons is that we are self-insured. We have to participate in uninsured coverage, but we're self-insured. So if we're going to lay someone off, we have to reimburse the uninsured program dollar for dollar for the monies we pay for the the people we have laid off. We haven't been paying into the unemployment sure insurance program and just, you know, cut the paperwork. We're at this point fully liable for the people who we would send to the unemployment rolls. It's also not advantageous to the community to have folks who do work that has to be done, not doing that work. We have not lost a beat in South Kingstown with our workforce. The marriage licenses that are requested are issued. The birth certificates and death certificates that are requested are issued. Building permits are still being issued. Building inspections are still being done. We still have police out on the beat. We still have, we still have paramedics who are going out and providing emergency medical services. That work needs to continue. There are some job classifications where there's an argument, I suppose, to be made that there's not a direct and immediate benefit. So, for example, while we are social isolating, fewer people are going to the parks. But that doesn't mean we can let the the weeds and the grass grow if we're going to be able to, you know, sort of move back into a normal life and have those parks to go to later in the spring and summer. So we, we don't want to just abandon what we do and we can't just abandon our people. The rules don't allow it and it's not the right thing to do. With regard to tapping the undesignated fund balance, I mentioned that we, Zach Sol and I, had spoken to the Moody Investor Services people and they're aware of our strategy on the tapping of undesignated fund balance. And they reviewed that as part of a bond rating associated with some bonds that we have to issue for work that's previously been done at the schools. And they said, this is fine. Your, your bond rating is, is safe. You're in good, you know, you're in good shape. We don't have to worry about tapping the undesignated fund balance as we've proposed negatively impacting our bond rating. It will not, and it did not. They've already done that rating. The second amendment that we proposed was designed to address the notion that the schools are going to have to somehow account for the fact that we don't know exactly what's coming down our way. We don't know what's coming at us over the course of the next year. We know that the schools have realized some savings. They've realized a million dollars in savings from transportation that has not been provided at the end of this school year. And we know that there may be some savings on transportation or we can surmise that there may be some savings on transportation next year. So we were trying to figure out how not to provide a property tax transfer without it being tied to actual services that we needed. Transportation was a reasonably easy business purpose that we could tie to funding. So the manager's amendment we proposed on the fifteenth, and I'm sorry, on the sixteenth, lays out a twelve-month or ten-month funding strategy each month that the superintendent can certify that funding is needed for school buses. The funding is made available. We have sort of rethought this and I'm going to let the council know that we're going to have a couple of slides coming up here. This is one tool and it's one way to achieve the sort of flexibility that we were trying to get. It's not the only way to achieve flexibility and we're going to talk about a different one in just a minute. But before I do that, I want to turn to the item that got us sort of rethinking the amendments that I just described. A petition was filed with the president read earlier in the work session or early in the public hearing. And that got us thinking and talking among ourselves about whether there was a better budget design that could achieve more of the objectives that should be and are at the core of our budget development. So the budget objectives that we try to achieve are stability. You don't want to disrupt programs. You don't want to have, you know, too many snowplows one year and not enough snowplows the next year. You don't want to have, you know, a thirty-kid classroom one year and a five-kid classroom the next. You want to stabilize your programs. You want to fund your programs so that they are able to to be slowly and progressively improved and slowly and progressively maintained over time. You want flexibility. On any given year, you do need some degree of flexibility. This year, probably more than most because there's more uncertainty. But things always happen. Things always come up during the course of a year that you have to be able to address. So you try to build some flexibility into every budget that you produce. And then you want to deal with agility. That agility, the concept of agility here isn't that you can, you know, deal with one problem or one set of issues that comes up during a single year. You want to be able to move the organization over time toward its long-term objectives. So flexibility speaks to managing things as they arise in any given year. And agility speaks to being able to move, you know, the, the aircraft carrier or the, the cruise ship on a long trajectory, trying to get things where you want to be over time, not just a single year. And then, of course, one of the underlying objectives, maybe the most important, is fairness. Budgets should be fair to everyone. They should be fair to the taxpayers. They should be fair, distribute the burdens among taxpayers and they should be fair to the people who receive the services that the public and elected officials have told us are the services we need to focus on. So the petition that was, was filed basically was designed to reduce the twenty twenty-one property tax transfer to the schools to zero. The idea was that doing this will either force cuts to the local program or even without forcing cuts, will avoid a tax increase. The, the first part of that is savings realized from the transportation cost reduction can be used to fund the schools' programs instead of providing property tax transfers to the schools. That means you can have a zero percent tax increase. This is the exact same objective and in fact meets the, the objective the same exact way as we do under the proposed manager's amendment of the fifteenth, April fifteenth. We find a revenue source that isn't a long-term revenue source and we use that to fund the program. In our case, the proposal we had made would have used undesignated fund balance from the town's undesignated fund. In this case, the petitioners recommend using the transportation savings. And there's an advantage to doing that. This approach does not increase the property tax transfer from this year to next. And this is an item, an issue that people, some people care an awful lot about because they see the property tax transfer increase from year to year that's stepping up as a ratcheting up of the town's obligation to the schools. Under state law, the municipality, every municipality has to provide as much funding to a school committee as they provided in the previous year. So if the property tax transfer goes up this year, the ratcheting up is presumed to be sort of the baseline for the next year. In reality, there are a couple of reasons why that's not really true and that we're not committed to the P P, the P T T of a previous year necessarily. But nonetheless, it deals with the concern about P T T ratcheting. And I, we acknowledge that and we think that is an issue that needs some attention. And as we get through the slides, you'll see the approach that the superintendent and I and Zach and Mary Ann have put together. So the other possibility with going to a zero P T T and having the schools use the savings from the transportation contract is that it's possible that those savings just sit in the undesignated fund or that they're used for other expenses that arise. Those, those sinks for kindergarteners that were setting up in the halls or what have you. That's a possibility, but there's no way to require that of the school committee. The school committee is free to take the savings from from transportation this year and apply it to the general program that they have planned and projected for next year. So looking at the theory of the petition again, they start with our manager's proposed amendment and they say, this is the problem with the manager's proposed amendment. You tack on a million dollars in undesignated fund to cover their inflation increase, the inflation-driven need that the schools have in this year. That moves over to the next year and then they're going to have to have more money on top of that next year. So you're giving them a million dollars this year and then you're going to have to give them two million dollars next year because you've moved their base from this twenty twenty-one budget to next year's twenty twenty-two budget. The issue with that is that replacing the undesignated fund monies from the town with the transportation savings actually leaves us in the same place. Because if they put those monies to the program, it becomes the need next year. And you calculate inflation on top of that need next year. And we end up in the same place. So the real challenge here is that we would have smoothed to some extent the property tax, I'm sorry. We wouldn't have actually treated the property tax transfer in the same exact way as the petition. The petition would have the benefit of a one-year zero increase in the property tax transfer. But it would actually spike the property tax transfer need in the second year and it also would spike the educa, the tax need in that second year in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. So we thought about that and said, okay, they've got some things in that, in that design. Getting rid of the property tax transfer does have some appeal. What about this model can we use? What can we do to sort of remake the whole problem, rethink the whole problem? And then we started laying out what the elements of the budget are. There's the property tax transfer, which is what we've given in previous years. It just is a benchmark. It's not necessarily the bottom line, but it is a benchmark. It's an important characteristic of the budget because it does, the past does serve as some prologue of what's coming in the future. There's the maintenance of effort statistic, which is just a question of how much effort did you make last year? That can be the property tax transfer. It can also be calculated differently depending on which part of the state statute you're working with. There's a decline in state funding, which has been a real issue for South Kingstown. It is an issue this year. It is not an issue next year. And that becomes an important element for us to be thinking about as we move forward. There's inflation-driven need. Folks don't like to, to think about it because it's unpleasant. When you think about governments, the cost of government goes up and up and up. But it's also true that the cost of everything goes up and up and up. And government generally shouldn't be increasing the cost of its programs above the general rate of inflation. And in my view, sticking to inflation, sticking to the increase in prices that everyone else is dealing with is a pretty fair way to manage government spending. We shouldn't be driving inflation. We shouldn't be costing taxpayers more than inflation. But when we have to increase the money we spend on heating fuel or on transportation costs or insurance, those inflation costs need to be borne. Otherwise, you do create a liability for the public in the future. The next element is the transportation savings this year for the schools. It's a one-time thing. It's not going to happen again. Unexpected costs are always an element of budgets as we described. But this year, they're particularly unusual and Linda will provide some, some examples of that. And there's the issue of time. And this is, this is what the petitioners really got us thinking about more than anything else. We're not operating in a single year. The budget has to be designed for this year. It's a plan for this year's spending. The budget has to be designed for this year. It's a plan for this year's spending. But it's a plan that exists within a larger timeframe. And figuring out what the relationship is between what we're doing this year and what we're doing next year and even beyond that is an important element. And I think we've been able to play with that piece of this to some better result. Taxes are obviously a plan. We have to make sure that we're not taxing folks unfairly or overly burdensomely. Program design is a huge element. Your program should drive your budget. We should not be asking for money as public employees, as public servants, because we think we can get it. We should be asking for money because it's what we need to achieve the results that elected officials and the public have asked us to achieve. Our program design, what we are doing with our programs is really the most important part of our budget. It should be the center. Trust is an important element, especially when you're dealing with entities that have competing interests, competing objectives and different views of the world. And conditionality is, is an important element of any budget. Under what conditions are the funds going to be provided? These last three are big elements. And one of the things that has occurred to us during the course of sort of rethinking the budget problem is that everybody is looking to the budget to solve a problem that isn't a budget problem. The notion that if we can keep the PTT down, we're going to resolve personnel issues or that we're going to resolve design issues isn't realistic. It's not, it's not reasonable to think that one number is going to solve the problem. The issues that folks talk about are issues about the number of employees or the test scores or that those sorts of things cannot be resolved by simply changing one number or aiming to change a single number in a budget. If we're going to get to the outcomes that folks are looking for, it's got to be by, by talking about what those outcomes are. We have to talk about design and changing the way we, we aim the dollars. It's, it's not about the number. It's about how the, the dollars are used, what they're used to achieve. And simply focusing on one number and hoping that we're going to make everything in a sixty-some-odd-million-dollar budget better is, is not necessarily the most effective way for us to, to pursue change. We recognize through the course of this conversation that we've got to focus on time. We've got to pay attention to the, the plight right now of taxpayers. And we've got to focus on building trust in the municipal programs, including the school programs. And that trust has to come from program design. We've got to explain to people what the objective is. We've got to explain how the public's description of what they want is going to be achieved through that program design. And then we have to explain why this dollar amount is the right dollar amount to achieve those goals. That's a lot to ask and it can't be done with a single budgetary number. So I want to just compare the two here. The petition, as I've described before, essentially gets us to the same PTT need in year two, next year, as our initial proposal did. We were going to use, we, we were going to deal with the fact that there was a seventy, I'm sorry, that should be K, seven hundred K difference in state funding. And we were going to therefore provide conditional property tax transfer of between zero and one million dollars because we had to make up the state shortfall. But we end up in the same place. The PTT after the two years is fifty-seven-one under the model that we were operating under. And it's a fifty-seven-one under the model that the petition sets up. The implied tax growth there is the same as well. The implied tax growth, tax levy growth, the amount of taxes that we'd have to collect next year in both the petition model and the initial manager's proposed amendment would be about four percent if we're assuming inflation, an inflation level this year and an inflation level of two percent next year. We're working with assumed inflation rates because obviously we don't know. But the scope and the scale are going to be the same. The, the, the impact of increased service provision here and here are the same. And the impact of an increased inflationary number, whether it's a million dollars or more or less than that is going to be the same on the two models. They both deal with the problem the same way. They simply use short-term supplemental funds to replace tax dollars. So we started to figure out whether there was some way to change that because that did mean that we were going to end up with a four percent spike in 2021, 22 under both models, and that's not a good outcome. So the first thought, and this was Linda Savistano's idea, was what if we, we just take the transportation savings out of the mix? Let's put the transportation savings back into the town's undesignated fund balance and we'll pay for our own property tax transfer this year. That's good. And then we were thinking again about what happens in the, in the out year. And we have something of a, a need in the out year that's reduced from what it was this year. Again, that seven hundred thousand dollar reduction in state aid isn't going to happen next year if the state follows state law. So we're going to have less of an increased need because we're not going to have to fill that hole. So that's good, but it still means that we're going to have an increase in taxes here. Whether it's going to be four percent or less is less clear in this model or under this scenario than the previous ones, but there's going to be an increased need. So then we thought about it this way. What if the schools return the property, I'm sorry, the savings from the transportation contract to the town? The town makes the conditional property tax transfers to the schools as needed. They will have paid, they will have paid for the property tax transfer that they receive. And we will have thirteen point five million dollars in our undesignated fund balance for an additional year, a portion of which could be used to provide for the need in an increase next year. It's going to, I think, be substantially less than the nine hundred thousand dollars that we would have to put out this year because we have the savings associated with no, you know, not being in a hole created by the state. So we're looking at this, in this model, of smoothing the property tax increase so that you don't see a spike in 2021, 22. And in fact, if we can do some programmatic reductions, if we can sort of figure out how to bring costs down, we could get to 2021, 22 without a noticeable spike in, in the property tax rate in 2021, 22. So to summarize this model, there is no tax increase in 2021. And there is less of a tax increase, certainly less than the four percent on fiscal year 2021, 2022 because we can use the undesignated fund if necessary that we were going to use this year to smooth the increase next year. So we were sort of spreading out that, that crisis management tool. And with that, I'm going to ask Linda to jump in. Linda? That was a long presentation and I apologize, folks. This has been occupying an awful lot of our time and I'm afraid I may have, I don't know, done some burning of brain pathways. We, we sort of got fixated on that. Linda?
Can you, I, hi, can you hear me? I am muted myself. Okay. So, um, thank you, Rob. I was just going to kind of tell a little story and, and reiterate some of the pieces that Rob said, kind of from the school department's perspective. So my, my name's Linda Savistano and I'm the proud superintendent of South Kingstown School Department. First, tonight I would respectfully ask you to, to deny the petition before you. As I shared on April sixteenth at the beginning of the budget hearing, if our FY twenty-one budget is not fully funded, then there would be an impact to our programs. I had outlined the specific programs that we were working to grow and expand for the critical needs of our children. The specific items that would be impacted are outlined on a list that's available on our website. And the link can be found there. It's still there. And then the narrative around that piece and it's available on our main page under news. I'm just kind of being fully transparent with that key. Um, I do want to reiterate, reiterate what Rob had shared. Our FY twenty-one budget was not developed to be a short-term plan, but instead is a step in a very long-term readjustment of our programming. The decrease in stable funding for this FY twenty-one budget would cause a significant impact for years to come. And when our budget was developed, it was not only created with next year in mind, but with long-term goal-setting at its core. And the FY twenty-one budget is actually just one phase in that long-term plan. So as Bob just shared, or, well, let me start with this. I'm assuming you are aware the school committee has a workshop tomorrow evening. And part of, you know, kind of Rob's story a minute ago, on the agenda, we have discussion and action of FY twenty and FY twenty-one budgets. And I've, I'm asking the school committee to carefully consider the current year's budget and consider a transfer of funds from the school to the town. So these funds would be the FY twenty savings due to the transportation contract change as a result of COVID nineteen virtual learning requirement. But I just want to quickly explain what's led us here because just sixty days ago, life certainly looked very different. So we started March thirteenth, knowing that we were going to be virtually learning for three weeks. So we knew three weeks. Then on March thirtieth, we learned that we had an extension until May one. Now, at that point, the school committee on April fourteenth did vote to not pay the transportation contract while services were not in use as allowed by the, our contract and retro back. On April twenty-third, so last Thursday, we learned that we would actually not be returning back to brick and mortar school building for the remainder of the year. So that's kind of the unfolding and the journey that we've had in the last month and a half. So ultimately, it was determined that it makes most fiscal sense for the transportation savings that would result to be transferred to the town. And this has been done, a conversation, this kind of conclusion has been drawn by working collaboratively with Rob and Zach and Mary Ann, and I am grateful for all the time. As Rob shared, there are still many unknowns and I just want to list out what we're considering as we plan for our reopening in our new normal. If these items do become required, then we would need to continue to work collaboratively to determine how to best fund them. And, and so we've begun to create a list. So I'm kind of, I'm just going to kind of give you some examples. So for example, addition of sinks for washing, possibly entrance of schools, lunchrooms, hallways, staggered schedules, knowing that we may need to break up classes so they're smaller, break up large groupings, breakfast, lunch, so it's smaller. Of course, needing more supervision, buses may need additional routes, so fewer students on buses. Does that mean more buses? Compensatory time, we've discussed, so that's additional time outside of the regular school day to make up for that miss specialized instruction. Could include, but not limited to OTPT speech, behavioral literacy and math. Social emotional supports from the kind of support staff like social workers, school psychologists to help support those children that are already having challenges. Additional PPE for staff and students. So we're thinking, we're hearing additional mask gloves, suits, our athletics. If allowed to start up, we'll need to look different and of course thermometers. Additional cleaning, spraying of buildings, spraying of buses, extra cleaning of touch points over time to support the additional cleanings. Cleaning and management of the kind of ventilation units is what we're hearing. And then kind of wondering if we'll need additional staff for extensive cleaning. Adjusted staff that are over sixty to sixty-five years old. So we do have those folks on staff and what will that need to look like for a kind of modified approach? That could include certified staff, clerical teacher assistants, custodial maintenance, bus drivers' monitors. And then distancing, so plexiglass to protect main offices, cafeteria, reconfiguration of cafeteria, furniture to space, floor marking signage. We're imagining that we'd need to duplicate events where you'd normally have assemblies. We'd need to reduce size. Then thinking about ways we need to separate on playgrounds, fields, way to separate pickup, drop off. Of course, utilizing our nursing staff as we consider just general health monitoring. And then what we're seeing in places like Shanghai are, they're doing a lot more temperature checks and monitoring. Gaps that we're experiencing probably as a result of virtual learning. Interventions would need to take place. We'd need a curriculum adjustment, professional development supports, more time and support to close any learning gaps. We know that we have technology as an area, return of the laptops that were borrowed, primarily those five through twelve, so one-to-one. So that's really looking at those that were borrowed for those students in grades pre-K to four. We know instructions change, so we're supporting digital tools as we move forward, moving away from desktops into laptops to continue to support hopefully this silver lining of our new normal. Guests, volunteers, how we would manage before entering school, checking, considering how we manage our central office and kind of that vestibule management that doesn't really exist the way we roll now, deliveries and how we manage that. And then how we, those that we normally use for volunteers or guests and if we'd be able to kind of function the same way. And then we already know we have some level of increased costs around cleaning supplies, PPE, software, overtime, not significant today. But those, so those are the kinds of things that we're thinking about as we move forward. And if I could just kind of wrap up, I'd just like to take the last few minutes around the kind of larger FY twenty-one budget, just to thank the school committee and you all, the town manager and the town finance director. I know that Mary Ann and our entire leadership team appreciates your support and patience with our school department budget season, from using a budget subcommittee to a goal-based budget. I, I know this was different for everyone. Your willingness to support a new process and a different conversation is much appreciated. I've worked very hard to try to stop any type of conflict around the budget. I've welcomed suggestions and questions. With that said, I know that there's always room for improvement. I am sorry that there's recently been a negative tone, especially during such a trying time. I'm confident that the school committee wants this to change. We know that energies need to be redirected. And I always say that anyone can be a good leader on a good day. It takes great leadership to be a good leader on a bad day. Well, one, it's a bad day and leading during a pandemic is difficult. Two, we're all leaders, not just those that are administrators or in elected positions. When we talk publicly, we all lead. So I'm asking all folks, our community, to dig deep into our souls and ask if we're focusing on the right thing and ask, ask us to ask ourselves, are we being the role model that our children need at this difficult time? As I began our budget season, I began with the statement right at the very first slide, the very first presentation that said, our children are our most important asset in our community. I'll say that again tonight. And, um, I respectfully ask that you support our budget request. And thank you for your time and consideration.
Uh, this is Abel. Uh, thank you Linda and Rob for, uh, those presentations. Um, Zach, I, I know that Rob brought you in as well. I didn't know if you had something as well to offer now.
Uh, Zach Rysol, Finance Director, not at this moment. Uh, any questions that you have, I'll, I'll do my best to answer them.
All right. Very good. Um, this is Abel again. Uh, so a, at this point, what we'll do is we'll have, um, you know, conversation amongst, uh, the panelists in the meeting. Once, you know, we've sort of exhausted commentary and questions, then we'll open it up for public comment. I see that people are starting to put in Q and A uh, responses down at the bottom. You could hold those comments to when you can ask, uh, questions live. Uh, you will be able to do that. Um, if, if you do have like a technical question, uh, you're having a technical issue, uh, please, um, put those comments in there at any time. All right. Uh, I'll open the, the floor here, uh, to analysts. If I, maybe I'll just prompt the conversation. Any, first off, uh, you know, Rob has come up, uh, with Linda on a new strategy rather than using town's undesigned fund balance, using what would be uh, the, the surplus from this year's transportation and go into their undesigned fund balance and transferring that to the town side, using that to cover the difference in the PTT. Thoughts on, on that? Rory, I see your hand. Uh, I will. There you go.
Uh, Rory McEntee, uh, Rob, just a few, few questions for you. Um, so the surplus that they anticipate to experience by the end of this, uh, current fiscal year, approximate $1 million, approximate equal to the, uh, 2% increase in the property tax transfer. They would essentially transfer that surplus to the municipal, which we would put in the undesigned fund and then transfer back to the schools as part of the 2% property tax transfer increase, which essentially equates to zero. However, the superintendent has identified additional costs that they foresee as a result of the pandemic. I'm trying to make sense of all this.
Yeah, that's right. I mean, the original design, um, on the manager's proposed amendment was leaving those, that, that million dollar savings in the undesigned fund for the schools in part because way to guarantee flexibility. Uh, the idea was, we know there are going to be uncertain, uh, expenses, expenses we can't anticipate. And they're going to need the monies to deal with those, those uncertainties. Further, the current undesigned fund that the school holds is about $2 million. And that's not awful, but it's not a huge amount of money. Um, so you're right. By taking the savings money and putting it back into the undesigned fund, uh, into the town's undesigned fund, transferring it to the schools for operational expenses. We are requiring them then to spend down their undesigned fund if contingencies happen and there's no way to, to pay for them other than through, uh, that mechanism. They can always, it is always the case, this year, last year, every year going forward, that a department that runs into extraordinary expenses can come to the town council and can look for a supplemental appropriation. So depending on the nature of the, uh, problem that they face over the course of the next year. If it's, you know, a $20,000 contingency or issue that they didn't anticipate, they're going to have the funds available to do that within their own budget. However, if it's a, you know, big item, if it's a million dollar problem, they will likely have to come back to the, uh, town council. And the council will have the control over whether or not, uh, those funds are made available. This is definitely a, a proposal that would require a tighter working relationship to address the problems that we're going to face over the course of the next year.
Uh, this is, uh, Brian Decrude speaking. Uh, quick thought I just had, does the $2 million in undesigned funds on the school side, does that include payments that have already potentially been made uh, to RGB and Peregrine, or is that where that money's going to come from, the 2 million currently that's in there?
I don't know the answer. Lynda, do you know?
I don't believe it does.
All right. So the Peregrine and, uh, RGB is being paid out of some other account?
It, it depends what, which pieces you're speaking about, but isn't that through?
So the
Zach can probably speak to that better.
So the, the Peregrine and the RGB contracts are contracts with the school department. What funding source they're using for those, um, they, they actually have multiple, um, agreements with RGB and
Right. I'm talking about the most recent one that we discussed.
And yeah, I cannot tell you what funding source they, they tapped for that work.
I believe it's diff, there are multiple. I, I'd have to go back and look.
All right, that's fine. Um, the other question I had, Rob, um, just on the town side real quick. Are, are we looking at a surplus this year a little bit in our account? And if so, are we going to apply that back to undesigned funds or to our overall budget on our town side?
I'll let Zach speak to the specifics of our, our, uh, surplus. Uh, we were anticipating a, we, we tend to have a surplus, um, each year, again, because we budget conservatively. Um, this year, the number is likely to be less than we anticipated at the beginning of the year or during the, at the beginning of this calendar year. Zach, what, what, what do you project?
So, uh, Zach Rysol, Finance Director. The, it's still hard to tell right now from what we proposed a month ago when we first started the budget. Uh, actually even longer than when we first budgeted the budget process. Any surplus that we do have can be used for a number of things. That's when we come to the end of the year, either requesting, uh, transfers for other areas that were, you know, to make up any, uh, shortfalls in spending or putting that money left over into the undesigned fund balance. We would present to you, uh, multiple options and it would be at the council's discretion, which would take place sometime in June. When we have a better understanding of what the year end would look like.
So we can give you one example of a surplus account that we've been talking about very recently, and that is the, uh, snow plowing account. Obviously, we weren't snow plowing this year, so we had sizable savings in that account. We anticipate a total uh, surplus in that count of somewhere in the neighborhood of $170,000. Some of that money should be put to Department of Public Services, um, activities like getting rid of our excess, um, uh, sweepings from the, the streets. We've got piles of street sweepings that we need to get rid of and those should be disposed of. We have the funds now to do that and we'd free up space, uh, at the highway garage. So that's a thing that should be done. Um, others of those money could be put to, uh, things like, uh, uh, speed feedback signs on, um, Middle Bridge Road. Uh, we've already gone out and, um, begun the bidding process for that. Uh, so there are some things that we can put some of those money to and part of the end of year sort of, um, treatment of those surplus monies is that we ask the council, can we spend the money on this? Can we spend the money on that? Do you, do you agree with us that this is an appropriate way to use these monies that we anticipated spending one way in this other way? Or do you want us to put it in undesigned fund? And typically, if we can't find a purpose for it at the end of the year, it goes to undesigned fund.
Thank you. This is Zach again. Also, um, we have used it in the past to help fund capital projects, whether they be, you know, if they're, if it's a long-term project or not. You can also use it to, um, in the short term, any capital projects that needed funding that we couldn't address, uh, in the current year. So again, it, it would come down to, uh, at the end of the year, what you would, uh, like us to use that money for. Again, we would present you with options and you would make that decision.
Thank you.
Can I go back? Um, I believe that the I, and again, I think Rob and Zach may know better than I do, but the RGB Peregrine payments coming out of a $4 million bond. I think, Rob, you spoke about it earlier.
Um, that is actually part of where they get, they, so Mary Ann's going to have to tell you, um, Brian. I, I simply can't tell you all of the sources for funding, but, uh, Lynda is exactly right. What you try to do is you look for places in your budget where, um, if you have the discretion to do so, where you can, um, anticipate where you're, you can see that your burn rate is not as, as fast as you thought it was and you shift funds as you go. So where she's, where she's found the monies to pay RGB, I cannot tell you. But yes, I know that she has anticipated some of those monies coming from, um, reimbursement from the state and some of those monies coming from, uh, bonded debt.
So, uh, if I could jump in, Debbie Kelso here, um, we heard Linda elaborate on where she thinks she may, uh, incur extra costs associated with the virus, uh, with remote learning. Do we have any idea, Rob, if the town will incur extra costs? And if so, uh, can you identify some of those?
Yeah. So our, our response is going to be different and there are policy questions that we have to make. Most of the expenses that I see us having to engage in over the course of the next year are things that we can do to provide direct services to the community. Um, we're going to have to do things like put up Plexiglas shields in front of, you know, the, the clerks, uh, desks and this sort of thing. We're going to do some, there's going to be some minor, uh, physical changes to our buildings. But the real costs that we're likely to incur are policy questions that will be coming to the council. Um, as, as we continue to see what the COVID-19 crisis means for the community writ large. I know that, um, uh, some of the council members were on a meeting that we had with business leaders, uh, from, from around town on Thursday. And one of the ideas that was floated was this idea that we could support the restaurants here in town by making space available in public parking lots or public parks, uh, so that they could use that space to get to the COVID-safe distances between tables. Now, if we're going to do that sort of thing, there are going to be costs involved in helping the restaurant community, uh, acquire tables, uh, if there's software that needs to be acquired or developed uh, for online reservation systems, those are the sorts of things that we could do. Now, there are policy questions. They're not, we're not going to be driven by a student service model, the way, the same way that, that Linda's program is. Linda already got 2,800 customers and the state's going to tell her what she has to do to keep them safe. Our customers are, the ones who come to town hall are going to find maybe some Plexiglas, maybe more hand sanitizer. But the real question is what can we do to be proactive in helping, uh, the community in ways that we haven't historically? Um, is it going to be some sort of economic development program, uh, that focuses on restaurants and tables and parks? Or is it going to be, um, some sort of, uh, other program designed to help, um, help folks? Uh, there's been some talk about, you know, just figuring out how to do, um, some regulatory relief around businesses, getting the permits that they need and the, the approvals that they need. That may require us to engage, um, services that we don't engage currently, um, consultants or something like that. So the expenses are going to be policy-driven and they're going to be driven largely by the framework that the state establishes for reopening the economy. We're going to have to support our businesses in figuring out how to address the new model, how to fit into the new model and make sure that it's not an impediment. Um, we're going to end up figuring out what our customers need more or less, uh, through conversation with them directly, rather than having the state say, your little customers, uh, need you to do this and that and the other thing, uh, for their protection. We're going to have to engage the community to know what our expenses are.
One, one of the items that comes to mind is property tax interest, uh, being reduced. Um, we, we have the ability to do that without any legislative, uh, interference. Um, have, have we started to look into what, uh, taking the interest payments down to 6% would do? Um.
So yes, and it's, it's a difficult thing to figure because we can't just extrapolate from our past experience. Um, we have relatively few folks who, who are delinquent and, uh, interest on property taxes is not a significant, uh, source of revenue for us under normal circumstances. These aren't normal circumstances. So reducing the interest rate. Uh, if we went from the 12% that we currently charge to 6%, it's not just a matter of reducing, um, yeah, cutting in half the revenue that we're going to see. Um, it's a matter of having half of the rate applied to a much, potentially much larger number of uh, property tax bills. And you're right, there's a whole area of expenses that we're going to have to work through in figuring out how not to be, um, draconian and unfair, uh, in, in tax administration over the course of the next year. We're going to have to figure this out. We're going to have people who are going to have difficulty paying their tax bills. And we're not, you know, we're limited in some ways. We have to be fair to everybody. We can't, you know, uh, give relief to some because they're, they're, you know, they've got a, a good story and we, uh, we can't make taxpayers from one side of town pay for tax relief, uh, for taxpayers on the other side of town, just because the story was, was, uh, heart-wrenching. We're going to have to figure these things out and we're going to have to figure out how to work with individual taxpayers. And yeah, there's going to be some expense and, and new customer service modeling that hap, happens in that space as well. But it's very difficult for us to know until we get a good sense of, um, how long the impacts are going to be and how dire the impacts are going to be. For folks who have, you know, jobs working for a stable institution, the University of Rhode Island, for example, or uh, South County Hospital, in, in most cases, there's some challenges in the hospital industry right now because of the way that the COVID um, event is distorting, um, medical services. But there's definitely, um, going to be need for us to have those conversations with folks, work through it and understand. We're not there. I can't tell you that. I know, uh, how much it's going to cost for us to appropriately deal with all of the tax challenges that are, are going to face taxpayers here in town. Yeah.
Rory, I see your hand up. Am you yourself?
Uh, Rory McEntee, uh, Rob, just a few more questions. Uh, it appears this new mechanism that you're, uh, recommending, the, uh, transfer of the surplus from the schools back to municipal and then municipal funding, the increase in the property tax transfer with that amount. It seems to be, the intent seems to be bring the baseline of the property tax transfer up for next year, and that somehow you've concluded that that will result in less of a property tax increase to residents when we vote on the budget next year. Can you kind of talk further on how you've concluded that?
So that's right. So the difference between paying for the property tax relief this year, using transportation savings on the school side and using undesigned fund balance is only different because it doesn't affect the PTT this year. But if Linda and the schools spend a million dollars, let's just say they're buying a one whiz-bang teacher. If they spend a million dollars to pay one whiz-bang teacher for the year, in the second year, you're either going to have to fire her or him, or that's your new base. So the fact that there was no property tax transfer in year one, doesn't change the fact that in year two, you've got an increased need. Then you've got your additional increase in the next year because you always have inflation. And when you get to year two, you've got the same exact impact. And when you get to year two, you've got the same exact impact on the PPT demand in year two. You've avoided the PP, the PTT increase in one year, but you just pushed it off to the next year. We both do that. I mean, I admit that that's a feature of, you know, my, well, no, actually, it's not on the PTT. On my design, I've got the, uh, 2% increase this year and then that's the base and you go 2% above it as an argument or as a, as a way to understand the increases. In this model, in the petition model, you're zero in year one, but you've got a shadow need that comes into year two that is the base, the actual, the de facto base for new discussion about what PTT is for that year. And since you can go to four, so if you're assuming, you know, a two for property, uh, for inflation this year and two again, again, those are just assumptions. They could be lower numbers, but the effect is gonna be the same regardless of which model you use. Is that clear? Does that make sense?
Well, we know, uh, the increase in the property tax transfer does not equate to an increase in property taxes that residents pay. We know that. These mechanisms that you've proposed have offered alternatives to increasing taxes. So increasing the baseline for the property tax transfer, in my mind, I'm just, it's not concluding to what you're concluding that we'll have a less of a tax increase to tax residents with, we look at the budget next year because we have a higher baseline.
You're right. I mean, part of what you're seeing in my presentation, and I can go back to that slide. Part of what I'm, I'm doing here is just sort of, um, let's see. No, that's not the right one. I'm sorry. I'll get back to it. Part of what I'm doing here is just trying to come up with a simple description. Again, we don't have actual numbers for the second year. And without those actual numbers for the second year, all you can do is sort of guess at it. But again, if you look at the, uh, petition side of this graph, you've got $1 million, which is paid for this year from a funding source. It's not a property tax transfer, but it slides right over into the next year because that need has now been established. That $1 million whiz bang teacher is on the rolls and you're either going to fire her, him, or you're going to maintain that as your actual base and you see the increase on top of that in the next year. Now, that's the PTT. If, if you're not going to pay for that with some other revenue source, federal revenue, continuing to pay for it with undesigned fund, if you're not going to pay for it with some other revenue source, then the only place you can pay for it is with property tax. And that's why you get to the spike in property tax, uh, increases in that third year under either of the models. Now, what we're doing with the proposed switch here is we're changing the spending. We're, we're changing the funding source. Instead of using property tax here, we are now using a portion of the undesigned fund in year two because we didn't spend it in year one. And we're projecting now, and this is a change that would go back and apply to any of the other models, by the way. It's just a new observation that we had through the conversation. And we're presuming that we're going to have de facto savings because we're not seeing an increase on the, in the, uh, state aid reduction. We're not gonna have to fill another hole. Does that make sense now? Am I getting there? It's not, we've been bending our heads around this thing. This is not easy. This is not, this is not, this is not easy. But what we are doing is letting Linda and the school program pay for tax relief in year one and using our undesigned fund balance, which we were going to use for tax relief in year one, and use a portion of it instead to ease the tax increase. And there will be a tax increase at some point in the future. We're not going to see COVID's, uh, suppression of tax increases go on forever. But we would reduce the overall need for a tax increase in year two by using our designated fund balance. If we think about it in just stark, absolute terms, in year one, there's a 0% tax increase because Linda's paying for it. In year two, in theory, there could be a 0% tax increase because we're paying for it with undesigned fund balance. In fact, that's not what's going to happen because we're gonna need to start getting back to normalcy at, at some point.
Mrs. Able, uh, Joe, I see your hand now.
Um, so I, I have a question for Linda and, and then I wanna talk to Rob for, for a bit, for some clarification, but I, I just wanna make a comment on, um, sort of, uh, I'm, I'm also confused, I think as Rory is, um, about, about the pers- the process for this, but but a clarification I wanna make is Linda and we don't pay for anything. The taxpayers are paying for this. This taxpayer money that we didn't spend. So, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna, um, beat that.
No, but let me apologize because you're exactly right. I was being, I was being.
I know. You were trying to clarify. I get it. The money was coming from the school with money that they didn't need to spend. Um, Linda, the question I have for you is that you laid out a series of, um, items that, uh, are potential cost increases because of COVID. And I wonder if you and, uh, your staff have spent any time and can come up with some sort of an estimate for what you think the financial impact would be. Now, I know that you can't be exact because you, the ride hasn't told you yet the scope and, and the depth of this, but do you have any sort of, you know, this is a $300,000 spend, this is 150,000, this is 850,000 potentially? Is, is there any understanding yet?
We, we've put dollars on those individual buckets, but we've not kinda tallied it and it would be far-fetched. You know, so if we say, we need two more buses versus, we don't need buses, but we just need masks. But you can imagine as you bucket out something to separate folks versus PPE versus the technology. Um, but we, so we've just started to put the numbers on there and we're, this is a lot of me listening to the governor, looking at research from the Department of Ed and then looking at research from Shanghai. Just how do people re-enter back into schools? How does that happen? Um, and then we're not quite sure, just as everybody else in Rhode Island, we're not quite sure what the next couple of weeks or the next couple of months do have in front of us.
Right. And, and many months. Um, unfortunately, we have to deal with this budget soon.
Right.
So it would have been helpful even to have some sort of a range for total spending rather, to, to add those buckets up and just have the, again, is it 350, is it 850, is it 500? And I know that it would be a guess, uh, based on the fact that you, you don't know what's gonna be required of you yet, but it would have, it would have been helpful to have that. Uh, Rob, um, a couple of things I, in, in your, your presentation was, um, was thorough and, and, and hit a lot of points. The way I see it, the, the real challenge or problem is that, um, compounding, uh, by not controlling spending. So a lot of, some of the things that you referred to were inflation-driven, driven increases and not all, and, and I would say, uh, a good volume of the spending on the school side is not inflation-driven. We've determined that, you know, pay, contractual pay raises are 2, 2% or so. Um, um, s- some, some, most, most things are less than that. But, but a lot of the, uh, costs are driven up or the spending increases are driven by, uh, for instance, next, next year's budget, at least in three areas, talks about, um, three new positions at a time when you have declining enrollment. Now, I get that there are gonna be different programs that might need staffing, but if you're losing 80 to 100 kids a year, spending on three new positions is not inflation-driven spending. So.
Ye- yes. I mean, I think it's fair to say that not all of the school departments or any other departments', um, changes in cost are inflation-associated. They're also, and, and I made the point on the, on one of the slides, that it's really programmed. And if the discussion is focused on program, then you can get to the costs before they show up in a budget. That's, that's really one of the points that I was trying to make in the slide with all of the elements in the budget. For us to focus on one number without focusing on the total program, we can't get to success. I mean, if I, if I were to, uh, try to have John Shock build an excellent public services, uh, department, which he has done, simply by throwing a single number at him, if I were to tell him, John, 2.4 and that's it. Go do the best you can. We wouldn't get the, the best program. What we need is to talk to John about what the people need, what the people want, public safety, pedestrian safety, improvement in the road surfaces, and we need to design to those objectives. That's, that's how you build the right budget. It's not a number. And there are those who would argue that John Shock's number, the one we focus on, the 2.4, is just the wrong number because we're not achieving the objectives we want. He's got the right people. He's got great people who do an extraordinary job, but the number is probably not the right number. We don't get to better outcomes by simply focusing on the budget numbers. Budgets are manifestations of the policy choices we make. That's all they are.
Yeah, I, I understand that.
Looking at the, the wrong end of the animal.
No, I get it. And, and historically, I agree with you. Uh, the, these are gonna be very challenging times, I think, for quite a while. And I think we have to look at the programmatic or policy-driven, uh, decisions that increase spending because of programs and policies, rather than the inflationary increases. So I just think that whether it's John Shock's department or the school department or, um, yeah, highway or Parks and Rec, we have to be very, um, at least for this budget year and probably going into the next one, uh, the town has to be very, um, stingy, has to be very conservative with their spending and, and maybe some things need to be put on hold, like the purchase of, you know, a big piece of equipment i- if, if we can get another year out of the one that we have, just an example. But I think that for this budget year and probably the next, the town just has to be, um, be aware of the, the challenges that the taxpayers are gonna have. And so in the, in the example of John, uh, John, or Public Works or Parks and Rec, we may have to, uh, adjust our spending on equipment. In the case of the, the school program, they may have to look at those three new positions. And I'm not saying, don't, don't change your program, but you might have to delay. The taxpayer is gonna be very challenged at least 12 to 24 months. Thank you.
Mr. President, if I may, I, I think that, you know, we've recognized that and we've tried very hard to design first a set of amendments that would get us to a 0% uh, tax increase. And then to respond to concern that it wasn't just the tax increase, but also, uh, the location of the funds and wanting to make sure that the conversation about program reform and change and, and the management of these extraordinary costs over the course of the year would be happening. And so this, this second approach is designed to really do two things. It's to make sure that we've got the control, uh, where we think it is likely to be effective. And we've got, um, a conversation that has to happen over the course of the year. And we've got this new element, which is, you know, really truly new, this idea that we can fund, uh, we can stretch our reserves further by bringing the school reserves into the whole community, um, response to the COVID event. Uh, it doesn't disrupt the programs. It keeps the kids in the schools, uh, assuming they're gonna be actually in schools, uh, but it allows the program to continue toward the reforms that Linda has been talking about in the longer run. Uh, again, this is back to that idea that there's flexibility in a given year, but the program also has to fit into a longer-term program so that you can get the agility you need to change the program and get to a better design. Better designs should be less costly. Better designs should not be, uh, infinitely more expensive every time you rebuild them or rethink them. Every time you do a, a design, you should be trying to get to the most cost-effective model you can. Uh, there are features in every government program that are not perfect, that need to be redesigned. I, I talked to Linda about this a lot. They understand that they have work to do, but it cannot be done in a single year and it cannot be done by focusing on one number.
Deb, I see you.
Uh, Debbie, uh, Debbie Kelso here. So I, I, I guess I, I have to fess up. I, I, I am thoroughly confused. Right? So I need, I need help going, going back to our original proposal, which we, uh, were operating under, um, as, as long as three hours ago, was the school department was requesting a 55.9 property tax transfer from the citizens. We were going to fund that or the, the proposal was to fund that by using a million dollars of the undesigned fund balance, keeping the property tax, um, burden on the taxpayers, uh, at zero, an increase at zero. Right? So this new proposal, and, and I guess I'm confused by the language that the school department is going to fund the increase, but they're going to return the, the busing money back to the municipal undesigned fund. So that's where my disconnect is. I, I need municipal finance for dummies. Okay? That's what I need you to do to help me work this through. So is the school department property tax transfer with the new proposal underway still at 55.9 million dollars?
Yes.
Where is the extra million dollars above and beyond last year's property tax transfer? What fund is that being dispersed out of?
So it will be the transportation savings. That's where the money's coming from.
Okay.
It's confused.
So we, we have not dispersed the checks. I get it. So the, the, the money's sitting in a, an account somewhere, not being utilized at the moment, the bus transportation money. And we're just going to use that. So does this keep the tax burden on the residents? It keeps it the same as it is right now, correct?
Correct. We will still have a property tax bill for every taxpayer in South Kingstown that is exactly the same this year as it was last year. 0% increase for.
So this really is, is no different than what we had before, except the town keeps control of the $1 million in bus savings.
The one difference that is meaningful, I would argue meaningful. I think it's a meaningful thing for fe- folks to understand that the property tax transfer, um, element between what the petitioners were looking for and what we've proposed once and now the second proposal is different.
Right. I, I wasn't really speaking to the petition because that's a different scenario. What I'm speaking to is what you just, I just wanna make sure I'm clear.
The one difference.
What, what, what is being proposed? And I think I'm clear. I think we, we, we just realized that I, yes, in fact, the million dollars in bus savings goes into the town, uh, coffers and goes immediately back to keep the tax rate at the same, uh, level it is right now.
That's correct. And then the.
Tax burden, it doesn't keep the tax rate at the same level. It keeps the tax burden at the same level, correct?
Actually, the rate will be the same. The rate will also be the same. Your tax bill, your tax rate will be, unless your value went up because of additions or. unless your value went up because of additions or improvements. The only thing that is important, the difference and the reason it's worth talking about this confusing thing is that it actually does change the way we reintroduce tax increases in the future. Because we're not spending down thirteen from our thirteen point five million dollar undesignated fund this year. We will have the capacity to use some of that if we need to next year so that we don't have a spike in taxes after a year in which we were deficit spending essentially.
So so in effect, the school department is turning over the one million dollars to the town and then we're so it does not affect our undesignated fund balance.
Does not.
In turn, are using that to get their uh property tax transfer to the fifty-five point nine million.
That's correct.
Okay.
And then have then we will have undesignated fund in year two that's available to avoid a big spike under any circumstances to a big spiking taxes.
Right. And and the seven hundred thousand realized.
Could help as well.
Uh, you know, next year with the state, we won't be losing the seven hundred thousand into the school department funds. So we'll have less of a tax burden next year.
It should help, but even if even if it doesn't help the way we want, having the undesignated fund not spent this year means that we will have a tool to use next year if we need to. To again, make sure that we don't have a spike in taxes.
Thank you.
Rob, could I ask you a quick question? This is Bryant.
Hold on, Brian. Uh, I think Joe had his hand up first, just.
Quick question, Abel, though, uh, my end.
Go ahead, Brian. I'll give.
No, I'm just saying I can't seem to raise my hand. So how is everyone else doing that?
Do you have the panelists uh sort of list up on the right hand side of uh your screen? If you see, do you see the right raise hand button, lower right?
Not not under me, I don't. Uh, but I.
It's all the way down the bar.
See it now. Thank you. All right. Great. Thanks. Joe, you can go first. I apologize.
Thank you. Uh, my mine will be quick. Um, so if I remember it. Um, so, uh, Rob, I guess. Or maybe Linda, has the school committee voted to transfer the funds over to the town?
We have a bit, we have a meeting tomorrow night where they'll entertain this.
And Mr. President, if I may, um, and Joe, that gets to your question of process. What I would suggest is that it's got to be a condition of the um transfer tonight. If you were to pursue this approach, then you would condition the property tax transfer of two percent upon there shall be, the the manager shall be authorized to make a two percent property tax transfer to the support of the schools if they transfer the um savings from the uh account on uh transportation.
And Linda, do we know the amount in that account? Do do we know the amount of the transportation savings till the end of this school year? Can you can you share?
Yes, um. If you give me one second, I'll give you the.
It's actually one of the reasons that this whole thing is confusing. Those numbers are almost identical. The the two percent in the savings. They just happen to be that.
One, um, we had it at our last school committee meeting, one point one.
And the two percent is one point zero nine.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Brian, uh, this is Abel. Uh, you have your hand raised.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, just a few notes that I've made along the way. Um, I got quite a few, but uh, one of the thoughts I had when it comes to um social distancing, Rob, for the summer. That's gonna probably have a significant impact on like recreation revenue. Um, it's gonna, you know, how how many people do we hire? How many people do we have on payroll? Um, and where do we make up the difference? And again, I don't think it's something we need to answer right now, but just something to keep in mind. Um, the other thing that I had written down earlier was there must be talk. And we don't know the answer yet, uh, but for some of these COVID issues with schools in the state around or schools throughout the country. I'm assuming that the federal government's going to help in some way, some of this money that they've been allocating uh to be able to help with uh, you know, extra hand wash stations, PPE, et cetera. Um, but again, we don't know how much that's going to be. Um, the the other question that I I can't remember, and I just kind of want to just make sure that we have it on record. Who who was part of the budget subcommittee other than Abel? Again, I I remember we appointed Abel at the council level, uh, but I don't recall who the other folks are that were on the budget subcommittee.
From the town council, are you asking or?
Just in general. I don't remember who they are.
Um, we have two school committee members, Kate and Emily, and then we also my um finance CFO, Mary Ann, myself, and my director of curriculum, Gina Marie Masiello.
And that was it. Rob, you weren't on that committee? Thank you for the clarification on.
One or two of their meetings, but.
All right. I think the other thing is that, you know, we we keep talking about an increase. And I guess the problem that I have with it, and it's just a concern. Um, I've been hearing from the general public or people that have been calling me or emailing or whatever that they feel like we're being tone deaf, not really listening to what's happening in the community, et cetera. Um, I think the problem is that this is an unprecedented time. We've never been here before. Uh, I kind of wish that we had additional information, but the only way we're going to get additional information is by allowing time to go by. Um, and then the other thing that I think some of the people in the community are frustrated with is they feel like uh, you know, the if you're a town employee or if you're a school department employee, you you kind of have the golden nugget. You're not going to be so worried about your job. Uh, but there are a lot of people in town that are worried about their jobs right now. And not knowing, you know, a quick example someone gave me is uh, someone going back to URI as an example, you know, um, they they haven't gotten a refund from URI at this point, but yet URI is looking for a uh deposit for next year that they don't have because they've been spending money on groceries and take for me, when your kids are home all day, they're eating a lot more than they used to. So um, you know, grocery bills are higher, in my opinion. Uh, things that we're doing are probably costing us a little bit more money on the town side and on the school side. So there's definitely increases there. So it's just something I think we need to keep in mind. And then the other quick question I had. Um, when it comes to the um I forget what the number is, but we have a fifty-four point nine million, right, for last year. There's additional money that the school gets right on top of that from programs. So what is the what is the I'll mute myself. Sorry. Uh, what is the actual number um on top of the fifty-four point nine? The budget on the school side.
Uh, and I muted. I'm just I'm just going to call up the whole the budget for you. We, when we gave the budget initially to you, we shared the um, including federal grants and um local um, grants, donations. So the sixty-four four eight two six nine two. Is that what you're?
Yeah, that's the number I was looking for. I couldn't remember because we're talking about fifty-four point nine, but really the budget's higher than fifty-four point nine. I was just looking to know what the overall budget was approximately. Um, that answers that question. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Brian. Uh, this is Abel. Uh, Deb, you still have your hand raised? I don't know if that's just uh a remnant from before or if.
Well, it's a new raise.
Okay.
Um, so uh, talking about um if this new new plan goes through, um, and the school committee meets tomorrow night to um consider the question. And Rob did give us, it would be contingent upon the school committee doing this, whatever question we have. There could be a question tonight that we would vote on. What if they say no?
Then they've got the, excuse me, this is Rob Zanetsky. So they've got then the transportation savings. And they don't get a property tax transfer. They're essentially in the place they would be if the petition were to succeed.
What what does that do to our timeline?
Well, if you pass a budget with a contingent um transfer. Budget is done. I mean, we can always go back and do a supplemental budget, but the budget is done. If they were to refuse uh the approach, then they'd have the transportation savings to work with directly, but they would not have a property tax transfer.
So the the question is either or, right? Um, so the to them. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Uh, Rory.
Uh, Rory McEntee, uh, my questions are for Zach Saul, Finance Director. Uh, why is it the belief of the town manager's uh office that this new suggested path uh is more beneficial than the original amendment as proposed on April sixteenth, which included a uh conditional transfer to the schools provided with a timeline as to when the bus services will be back in schedule?
So this is uh Zach Saul, Finance Director. I believe back in the earlier proposal, it wasn't, we didn't know what the transportation savings was, so we put the conditions on there. Um, to stagger the property tax transfer throughout the year uh so that we could control the spending if there was a savings. Now that we have a better understanding where the savings are, I think what we're trying to do is take the transportation savings, bring it into the town side and use that to alleviate not having to tap into the undesignated fund balance of the town for this year. If the school department needs funding for additional expenses, then we can draw down and give them what they need. And then whatever is left over would remain with on the town side and stay in the town's undesignated fund balance, which could be rolled in for a number of uses in the future, which one could be property tax relief. If it stayed in the school side, it would just roll into their fund balance and then you, you know, you create your baseline. The mechanism of bringing it over to the town side allows some more flexibility with what we can do in terms of sending that money to the school on an as needed basis based on whatever they have related to COVID nineteen and whatever they can't be reimbursed for. I don't know if that provides more clarification or not.
All right. So the anticipated savings as a result of transportation or lack thereof has remained at an approximate one million. So there's really been no changes to that. Um, but a few other clarifying questions as I think through this uh new recommendation. This essentially equates to giving them no property tax transfer increase and allowing them to operate with their savings experienced from the lack of transportation. Is that correct?
So, Mr. President, if I if I may, um.
Essentially, yes, you're moving around funds, but it equates at the end to the net of the same thing as no property tax transfer increase. And operating with the surplus generated from the savings of the lack of transportation.
So the right way, I think, to think of this is how many millions of dollars do they get under either of these scenarios? Under the scenario that we had proposed on April fifteenth, sixteenth, they would have gotten a million dollars in property tax transfer and they would get a million dollars in transportation savings. Under the proposal that we've made tonight, they would get a million dollars in property tax transfer, but they would not get a million dollars in in transportation savings.
Okay, let me rephrase my question because the question is a flat baseline property tax transfer is an approximate fifty-four million or fifty-four point nine, somewhere in that range, right? Now, the surplus in their budget is around one million experienced from the savings from the lack of transportation.
That is correct.
So assuming that there's no increase in the property tax transfer, they operate with a one million dollar surplus, which they can use as they please. Now, this new mechanism mechanism that you're proposing is the savings experienced from the transportation moved over to the town and then moved right back over to the schools. Essentially, it's the equivalent to the schools operating without a property tax transfer increase and operating with their surplus. Is that?
Except except that the undesignated fund balance in this second mechanism remains thirteen point five million dollars under this scenario. Whereas with the prior scenario, it would have been depleted by a million dollars to twelve point five million dollars. So this actually preserves undesignated fund balance in the town's accounts for the year.
Yes, but the additional amount that we get, uh, the tapping of the undesignated fund for the one million dollars is essentially made up of a two percent increase in the property tax transfer allotted to the schools. Is that correct? And the initial, the original preliminary budget that was passed or the amendment, sorry, that was proposed.
Proposed amendment was to give a two percent property tax increase and to leave two percent savings an amount equal to two percent of a a property tax increase, to leave a million dollar savings also on that side. We are drawing the million dollars back so that we're not leaving two million dollars in the school account. We're leaving a million dollars. I mean, we really are just taking a million dollars. Yes, you're correct. We could leave it there, but if we leave it there, then you end up with deficit spending on the school side and you don't have a fund balance of thirteen five on the town side.
Rob, I I'm not I'm not suggesting that we leave it. I'm asking you if the mechanism that you're recommending now is the equivalent essentially financially to no property tax transfer and them operating on their surplus. Is that correct?
No, I think part of my my challenge here is that from my perspective, a PTT is a legal concept, not an accounting concept. So I'm I'm looking at it and I'm saying, no, if we transfer the money, it is transfer from the town to the school and it is going to be PTT. So the monies, you're right, it's a million dollars here.
The net effect is the same essentially. Is that correct?
It is essentially the same. That is correct.
Zach Saul, do you agree with that? The net effect is essentially the same between the two different scenarios?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, Deb, your hand is raised again.
Right. So um in the scenario, the uh million dollar increase in the property tax transfer was going to be allocated over many months, a drawdown sort of, if with the the conditions were met. That is no longer part of this scenario or is that still part of this?
So it is the school, to the school's benefit to have those funds not conditioned. That's part of why they wanted to see it done this way as opposed to having it doled out over twelve months. Because this way, so long as we get the million dollars that's that's paying for it, they're going to get the money because essentially, as as Rory has just pointed out, it's the same money, essentially. It is an accounting device to make sure that we're not depleting the town side and the monies would be available to them. The only condition that I would uh net would put to this, and you'll note that the slides had a zero to two percent uh increase when when describing this. That's because I don't want to presume what the council wants to give. But the only condition I would recommend be put to this property tax transfer is that they assign the savings to the town. That would be the only condition. And once that condition is met, presumably tomorrow night, there'd be no no remaining condition to be met.
Right. So essentially, they're they're paying us back for the million dollar increase.
Yeah.
Right? Okay.
All right, uh, thank Deb. Um, this is Abel. Uh, Bryant, I see your hand raised.
Thank you. Uh, I just have two more comments um or questions. Uh, one, I kind of feel like we're washing money in a little way, in some ways, but um that's just kind of my feeling on that. Uh, the question that I had is, um, do you know how many employees uh will be retiring from the town this year and from the school department? Is there a plan? Is anyone identified that they are going to retire?
E- each month, we report out at the school committee meeting, anybody who submitted, but we don't have final numbers. Folks haven't submitted their retirement yet.
Any idea on who's eligible on the town side and the school department side?
Oh, Zach, you looked at this this afternoon. Um, do you recall? I I remember looking at the sheet and I don't want to, I I don't want to misstate it.
So I have, uh, Zach Saul, Finance Director, I have put in a request to the employer's retirement system to get an accurate or an updated figure of who for eligibility purposes. to get an accurate or an updated figure of, for eligibility purposes, and I can get that for town and the school.
This is Rob Zornetski again, but Councilman DeCruz, you're exactly right. It's one of the tools that we're going to have to be working on over the course of this year. Our hiring practices are going to be different this year than they typically are. Our personnel issues over the course of this year are going to be different than they typically are. We're going to have to be very careful about taking on replacements for anyone who retired.
And one final question, this came up last year. I was surprised that we, the school department only hired top step teachers. So going forward, is that policy going to change a little bit or is it still the same policy?
This is Linda Stavsdal. I imagine that maybe that was happening because sometimes certain certifications are difficult to fill. So you don't have a choice if there's only one or two applicants and they're, you know, qualified, then that's, some areas are difficult to fill. We're finding that in schools. It's the first time I've seen it in my career, but the last like four or five years, it's been like that for math, science, world language. But and then there are some that are a little bit easier to fill. So that could have been the reason why we, we always, of course, want the best applicant. With that said, we did hire a step one, if that's the lowest rate, we hired, you know, just this past summer, a step one teacher. That's phenomenal. So that we don't only err on the side of the 10th step. So we'll absolutely always look for kind of the best bang for a buck, if you will.
All right. So that's good that, that's going to be your policy going forward. You weren't here, I don't believe, last year when I asked the former superintendent the question. Her answer to me was that that was the policy set forth by the school committee previously, like meaning over the years that they, they looked for hiring top steps. So it's good to know that you're going to consider all levels of folks when hiring.
All right. Thank you, Bryant. So I feel like we've, we've been going over the, this question about the transportation savings quite a bit. I want to be cognizant of the, the time and our audience. So there's the additional question of outside human service agencies. Small number in terms of the budget, but I think we should have that discussion so that we can vote on it. There were a couple new agencies that came to us seeking funding. One is,
Mr. President, if it's helpful, I can pull up the list.
Yeah, I have it. So we have, and you can pull up certainly 6,500 for the South County History Center. It's sort of a one-time payment for some archiving of town documents. And $3,000 for the South Kingston Village Trust, which is oriented towards historic preservation in town and village centers mainly, I believe. So any thoughts on, on these items here before us?
Well, if I may, Mr. President, Debbie Kelso. I first have a question. We identified $10,000 in unfunded requests here. Do we have any idea where we would acquire that $10,000 if we were to fund everyone on this list barring the village trust because they did not submit an application?
And this is Abel. I'll, I'll take that. You know, it's, it would be our job to identify where those funds would come from tonight. You know, we could look at the undesigned fund. We could look at our own contingency fund as a council. Last year, you may recall that we used some of, you know, the previous year's unused contingency fund to fund one of these outside agencies. So there's, there's that potential. It's a small enough dollar amount that it could come out of there. But yeah, I mean, it's.
All right. So I would be in favor of funding them all except for the village trust because we did ask them for additional information and they did not submit an application. So hopefully they'll do that for next year. But I'd be in favor of funding all of the requests and to include the South County History Center for $6,500. And I guess that that could be a motion.
This is Abel. Yeah, well, we're going to wait for motions until we close the public hearing and then amend the, you know, what we voted on. But I, I will seek that when we get to that point. Any other comments on these outside agents?
I have a comment. I agree with Deb just slightly differently. I think with everything that's been going on with COVID, et cetera, the meeting schedule and the way that we're meeting, that maybe we should allocate some money for the village trust. And then allocate the money, but don't give it to them until we have an application that we agree upon.
Thank you, Bryant. Any other comments on these outside agents?
Thank you, Abel. Joe Vili, on the village trust, I would prefer to hold off just because that was one of our last meetings, I think, in person and we made it clear and I, I'm not sure of the, of the business model for that organization. It's a brand new organization and they're, they're looking for some seed money. And again, it's not a tremendous amount of money, but I would like to see the business plan or the business model for that effort before I would you know, allocate the money. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. This is Abel. I would point out also that, you know, if we were thinking of using our contingency money as a potential source for this money and, you know, village trust comes up with a plan, they're still seeking $3,000 in six months, then we can authorize spending out of that contingency fund any time of year. It's Bryant, your hand up.
If I had my hand up, it was my accident. Sorry. But I have a quick, I'll just add to that. I do agree that we've done it in the past where we've gone to the contingency fund. I think last time we did it for the smiles program. Probably like 17 or 20,000 back then. So I would be amendable to agreeing to funding everyone except for the village trust at this point and possibly looking at the village trust further down once they have a business plan in place.
Rory?
Rory McEntee, I agree with most of the members. I think at this point in time in the economy, you know, these human service agencies need all the funding they can get. I support fully funding the S with the exception of the village trust group headed by Maury Gates. We are requesting more information upon getting that. Maybe we can reevaluate. But as far as funding, fully funding the remaining agencies, I'm in support of that.
Very good. I think that's good. We moved right through that discussion. Any other general comments from panelists on the budget as a whole before we open it up to public comment? Rory, is that a new hand raised? Go ahead.
Sorry, Abel, I was, I stayed up.
All right, Joe.
So just some, some comments that I put together before this discussion and the discussion actually hasn't changed a whole lot about what I have to say. So the, the conditions in town, the financial conditions for our residents, taxpayers, businesses. We have extremely high unemployment. We're seeing a lot of business reductions and I think we will see some business closings. Unless this turns around quickly, and I don't think anybody's predicting that. Business revenue for those businesses that are restricted is crushed and this trickles down to their employees who are also taxpayers. Right? We already have had requests at the council level through emails for property tax deferrals or some sort of tax relief for taxpayers. And we're in quarter four of this current year. We're not even talking about the budget that we're working on. So this is certainly not business as usual. So since the last budget hearing, April 16th, I think it was, I've received a lot of emails. And the majority of the emails that I got requested that we control spending and not use the undesigned fund balance. At the budget hearings, we heard the argument that there were increased costs for distance learning. But nobody at those two budget hearings offered any evidence that there will be added expense or that in fact it would be a high expense. In fact, the school administration offered that some expenses will be covered by federal reimbursements. We know of a tremendous decrease in spending related to distance learning and transportation. So far, the savings are over a million dollars. That is taxpayer money. And if the money was budgeted and not needed, the taxpayer deserves an explanation on why it should not be returned to them. We also don't know what other savings there are. It could be sizable. So I've carefully gone through the school department proposed budget and I found at least three areas where staffing is being increased. In these times, it makes no sense to increase staffing or spending when you're losing 80 to 100 students a year. $23,000 a student is among the highest in the country. And even if the school department budget is level funded, the cost per pupil will increase just because of the enrollment drop. So this is my sixth budget on the town council. I was involved pretty deeply before I got elected on council. So I, I took some wording from some of the emails that I got. So my response at all these budget hearings has always been measured and calm and takes a long range view. I am mindful of the school program, but must always consider the taxpayer equally. And that's what I think this budget needs to respect, that these are unprecedented times. We have taxpayers, again, we're in quarter four of this fiscal year and we have taxpayers who are, who are now asking for relief, not even for next year's budget. So I think I just want to make these comments. I'm assuming you're going to go to the public soon and I just want to make these comments because I think that this council is mindful of the taxpayer and I just want to be sure that the public knows that. And again, these conditions are none like we've ever seen and we've got to be even more mindful now. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Bryant?
So a couple of things. One, I received a couple of messages. I guess the question I had asked before, again, I don't know if this is accurate, but someone sent me a message saying that the average is a 14 or so employees per year retire. They weren't clear as to whether or not that was townwide or school side. But more importantly, someone wanted to correct me on, I guess, a question that I asked earlier regarding the policy to hire top step teachers. What they wrote to me was that the policy was that we place the best teacher in the open positions. In all things being equal, we agreed to go with seniority. They got rid of the, because the union thought the policy was in place to get rid of higher paid people, they got rid of the policy. So it no longer applies and they just wanted me to clarify that. So I clarified that. But going back to where Joe ended off on his comments, I've been struggling ever since we've been from the first day that we had the emergency meeting on a Sunday about what's best to do for our, for our town and what's going to get us to the other side with the least amount of damage. I agree with Joe that we've received so many different emails or messages or calls from people that are struggling. We weren't participants in the two meetings that the manager had with business folks in town. But we sat in the audience and listened. They're all struggling and Joe's right that a lot of businesses are going to be going out of business. There are people that thought they were getting the PPP that got it and there are people that haven't gotten the PPP. You know, the, the payroll protection money. I can appreciate what the school department and the school committee is trying to do and I applaud them for that because that's their job. They need to make sure that they advocate for what's best for the students. We kind of have to try to balance that a little bit on the town side, on the council side. We want what's best for the students. We want what's best for the teachers. We want what's best for the community. But we also have to take into account what's best for the entire town as a whole. So that being said, my opinion, you know, and again, we're going to listen to comments. I would be in favor of letting the school department keep the savings from the bus transportation for this year to apply to next year and level funding for this year. I think it doesn't send a great message to folks in town that are struggling and in my opinion, I think there's going to be a lot more people struggling. This pandemic has hit everyone from people that were already struggling to people that weren't struggling, that are now struggling. It doesn't matter how much money you were making before. This has had some sort of an impact. We don't know how soon we're going to get back to normal in terms of being able to get back to a normal life. It could be months from now, you know, we might be walking around with masks for a while. You know, my opinion in, you know, when the restrictions are lifted, my other concern is are people going to get out and go out and spend money or are they going to be a little bit more conservative and not actually go out, you know, and kind of wait and see what happens? So we are in unprecedented times. We don't know exactly what's happening, but I think we need to be responsible. What I don't want to happen is I don't want to end up eight months down the road and figuring that we only collected 70 something percent of our tax collection and be in trouble financially that way. But I do also agree that we shouldn't touch the undesigned funds at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Bryant. Any other comments from panelists at this point? I mean, we'll all have an opportunity to offer some closing comments after public makes comments as well. So at this point, definitely want to open it up to public commentary. I see that we have a lot of attendees, which means that I'm going to have a time limit on comments. I will make it three minutes. And, you know, we'll see how that goes. Can they, all the attendees be brought into the meeting at this point? Susan or Colleen? Hey. And so as we're moving you all into the meeting, if you're on your phone, what you're going to want to do to raise your hand is press star nine to unmute yourself. You want to press star six. If you are on a computer or, you know, all the other devices out there where you can get video, you will be able to turn your video on. You'll have to activate the, your, your share video or I forget how it shows up on your screen, but you're allowed to do that if you'd like this time. And again, this is a public hearing, so please identify yourself for the public record. And so I will call on people in the order that they raise their hands. First, I see a telephone number that ends in 679. I believe you are.
Abel, actually, we've brought Dorold Beasley and he was first in line.
Okay. All right. I am not able to unmute him as he muted on his end.
Dorold, you have to unmute yourself. There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Dorold.
Okay. Am I reverberating?
No, you're okay.
Okay. All right. So here are some of the headlines in the last week or 10 days. All right, so here are some of the headlines in the last week or ten days. Rhode Island schools closed for the year. Rhode Island named one of the worst states to work from home. U.S. has lost twenty-six point five million jobs. Twenty-two percent hike unemployment rates. Okay, two weeks, two weeks ago, when, when you had the back to back, when you had the back to back meetings, at the end of that, I said, it sounded, it felt like you guys live in the Twilight Zone. Right, now I sent all this information to you. One of the things that the school district keeps saying is that the property transfer, property tax transfer over the years has been used to replace the money that was taken away from the funding formula. That in case, the benefit is incorrect. Right, just for the last three years. Or the last three years, the drop in education aid is a little over two million dollars. The property tax appropriation increase is equal to three point five million dollars. So right now, you're already, the, the schools are already one point five million dollars above. And now in last year and this year's budgets, there are overages in the salary and benefits lines of almost two million dollars. I hate to say this, okay? This is fraud. The school district is frauding the taxpayers. They have money last year and money this year in those, in those budget lines over and above what was necessary to fulfill the contract requirements. Last year, in the salary line, they had enough money in there for a three point four percent increase for every employee, an eight percent increase in benefits for a total of almost five percent. This year, they're asking for another four percent increase in the salary line and three point seven percent in the benefits lines for a four percent increase. But the increases for those two lines in almost all the contracts is around two percent. There's two million dollars in there. For them to say that they don't have, they're, they're going to be able to cut programs if, if we, if you don't fund them cooperately is just a crock.
All right, thanks, Doral. If, you know, I think those are strong words when you throw fraud around.
Yeah, they are. They are strong because they're true, okay? And here's the thing, I'm going to believe my last comment.
Okay.
Okay. If you guys really wanted to do your job, you would ask for a forensic audit of the school committee.
Okay. Linda, would you like to, you know, try to answer these, you know? I understand that the salary line item goes up year over years. You know, salaries increased, sometimes it's in line with that. But, you know, the benefits increase year over year with benefit packages, contractually obligated to do that. I don't know, you want to explain complexity there?
I'm, I'm not exactly sure what the question was either. I know that there was reference to the decrease in the support from the state and then also, and then supplementing with the town. That's common for districts that are losing districts. I wasn't here, but I am, but I can see where that would have needed to have happened. And I'm sure that the school department was grateful for that support. And it is complex, you're right, as you have staffing. It's not just, it's not just an increase in salary. There are benefit implications to it, retirement included, health insurance that goes with those increases. We are audited each year. I, I will share as well. And we did do report out publicly on the results as required by law. Each school department is and town are audited at the end of each fiscal year. So that information can always be made available. Audits are public.
Thank you, Linda. So, is able. Susan, have all the attendees been imported into our meeting then, or was that just Doral? I don't see a lot of hands raised. Is there, if there are people out there who want to make some public comments, please make use of the raise your hand button on your, your little participant list.
Okay, there's two new ones just now popped up. The first one is Greg Sweet.
Yep, Greg, you may need to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now, yeah.
All right. Good evening, everybody. My name is Greg Sweet. I own a local business in town, and we've been severely impacted by the pandemic. As you heard from the meeting last, I think it was Thursday, the Zoom meeting, that there were a bunch of businesses that participated. It's not just my business that's really suffering. It's probably, if not every business, certainly more than ninety-five percent are suffering. If you drive down Main Street, you'll see, look at the stores. A lot of those are small places for them. If, if all of them reopen, I will be shocked that this summer is going to be tough because people are not going to go out, but they, like a normal summer, people are going to be afraid to go out and shop these different places. You know, boaters have money as a rule of thumb. If you drive down Route One and look at the marinas, you find not really all that many boats in the water. I think normally by this time, most, if, if not all of boats, floating in their docks and people going out. I drove by there this morning and this afternoon, and there's not many boats there. For to, to increase this budget in any way, shape or form, you're doing the taxpayer a huge disservice. The school committee has already said that they need the million dollars to survive this coming year, to provide the services that they want. They, they already have the million dollars that they're saving from the transportation. This flip flopping of the money, to me, it's, it's extremely confusing as it was, and I think still is for everybody on this panel. Just to keep everything clean, just let, let the school committee save, just keep the money that they save. If it's more than the million, fine, they get more. If it's less, then they have to deal with it. In transferring the money to the town council side and then giving the property transfer back to school committee, alls I can see that that does is just increases the starting point for next year. And that's going to cost the taxpayer more money. Unless I'm misunderstanding this, and I don't think I am, but maybe I am, this plan is not very good for the taxpayer as, as a whole. That's all I have.
Thank you, Greg. And next I see a hand raised from a telephone number. The number is, ends in four, one, eight.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, this is Kristy Fish calling from West Kingston. So I'm calling more to clarify a couple of things because I have to admit, I'm a little confused. I'm where Deb Kelso was, and I'm so grateful that she asked the question and for clarification because it is kind of hard to follow along. I also just wanted to acknowledge Rob again for taking in what everybody said and trying to be flexible with the situation, and also for Linda coming on and explaining a little bit more too. But I'm still confused, and I know Rory kept trying to explain it more or better. But the thing that I need clarification on is if the million dollars savings is going to go into the town's undesigned budget instead of the school's, correct?
Yes.
The school can still utilize that money if and when they need it?
This is Abel. So essentially, it's getting transferred out of, yeah, their undesigned fund balance into the town's undesigned fund balance. So it goes back to them through the property tax transfer. And then they use it as part of their budgeting process.
So the school has access to that money?
Yes.
Okay. And then the other thing I wanted to clarify because it confused me was, Rob mentioned something about, it was kind of, seemed almost like an either or situation that I needed clarification with. It was, it was kind of either the school committee approves this new suggestion or the petition gets. I'm trying to figure out what the either or is. So if the school committee doesn't approve this, then what happens?
So this is Abel again. So, so if the, the school committee will be meeting tomorrow to sort of discuss this issue about transferring the transportation savings back to the town's undesigned fund balance, if they decided not to transfer those funds back to us, we just simply wouldn't send them back to them through the property tax transfer process. They would be holding on to those funds that we were just going to send back to them. So that's the either or. They either send it to us and we send it back to them, or they keep it themselves.
Okay. And then what happens with the approval of the budget? That gets voted on as it was going to?
This is Abel again. So, yeah, so the, the contingency in there is that they would, rather than getting the property tax transfer, including those transportation savings, they would get the property tax transfer minus those transportation savings.
Okay.
Oh, I'll let Rob add to that if he'd like to.
Okay.
So I want to address Greg Sweet's concern, and I apologize, folks. I did not mean to be adding confusion at the end of what has been a very long and difficult budget process anyway. That having been said, the concern that Greg Sweet identified in his comment is exactly why this procedure, this, this new method was developed. The impact on the taxpayers in the second year is greater if we leave the transportation savings in the school department and do not provide a property tax transfer this year. It's also greater, the impact on the taxpayer, if we approve the amendments that were offered on May fifteenth and sixteenth. The petitioners correctly identified a deficiency in the proposal made on the fifteenth and sixteenth. And that deficiency was that it accounted for one year's worth of impact on the taxpayers. But so too does the tax, so too does the petition as it's offered. If you only leave the money in savings to the school, then you're going to have a second year rebound because that money is going to be put to operations and you're going to have a deficiency. The only way to deal with that is to spread the property tax transfers out over two years. You do that by having the schools contribute the first year's worth of million, first million dollars and having the town backstop that with whatever's needed below a million dollars in the second year. We need to stretch this over two years in order for us to relieve the property tax burden that ultimately is associated with not raising taxes this year. Not raising taxes this year is relatively easy, but as the folks who were critical of the proposal on, on the fifteenth and sixteenth correctly identified, eventually there's a hangover. And what we're doing here is making sure that we address that by having another revenue source other than taxes in that second year, so there's not a spike. Greg, this is designed to do exactly the opposite of what your, your, or understanding is. It's designed to address that very concern because neither the petition, the lead transportation savings in the school department and not providing a property tax transfer will create. It'll have that spike in the second year.
Thank you, Rob. Ms. Fish, did you have?
Yeah, I wasn't, I didn't finish my, wasn't able to finish my comment, but that's okay. I'm glad Rob was able to explain more. So one more quick question. With the money being in the town council's now undesigned fund, what would, is there any type of process that would happen when the school should need access to that money for, say, compensatory time or whatever is, it is that they need it for? Is there a process that they have to go through with the town? Or is it just, we need this money for this? How is that going to work?
This is Abel. I believe that they would send us a request for supplementary funding. We would look at the supplementary funding out of probably the undesigned fund balance. Rob, if you wanted to add more to that.
I think that's exactly what would have to happen at that point. They would have their transfer, and if there were contingencies that arose, they'd have to be. Again, if the contingency is relatively small, the school department still has its own undesigned fund balance of two million dollars, they'd be able to handle it. If it was a catastrophic event, something very big, that could certainly happen, given, you know, where we are in the world today, then they'd have to come back to the town council and look for a supplemental appropriation.
Okay, so I, within saying that, I just want to, want to end my comments, but I needed clarification as, I'm not going to be the one that's voting on this. I just needed to make sure that everybody really clearly understood. And I completely support what everybody's saying in terms of what we're experiencing and what it's doing to everybody's budget. However, again, I still do feel like I need to speak on behalf of the schools and the children of the schools because they don't get a vote or an opportunity to speak. That as much as we are suffering financially, there definitely are going to be long-term consequences for the schools and the kids, whether or not they return in September. And there's going to be a lot of different things that need to be taken into account. So when the school committee meets tomorrow, I'm assuming they're going to really think about what those potential consequences are. And just keep in mind that is as disastrous as this is for the taxpayers and for everybody, people that own small businesses in the town, we still do need to think about the children, the most vulnerable children. And I get it, that costs money. And Linda proposed programs that are going to help strengthen what we have. It's nothing new, it's to strengthen it. And then you're looking at the other things that we have to take into account for the pandemic. So I'm, I'm just asking that that is also given equal amount of consideration because I feel as a taxpayer and as a person that has three children in the school department, that also needs to be given equal consideration. I feel like council members got to speak a lot about letters that were sent in saying that people, you know, were very concerned about that. Well, I'm calling in to say I am very concerned about the school and equally concerned about taxes. But I just, I just felt that that also needed to be present in this meeting. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Susan. I just want to say that, you know, I have a three minute time on it. I'm going to try to be better about keeping people to that. What I'll say is if you ask a question and, you know, we're, spend a lot of time answering it, I'm not going to count the time that we're answering questions against the time that you have. against the time that you have to speak. And I do want to recognize what she just said. You know, we've gotten a lot of emails and messages from folks who are concerned about, you know, increased tax burden, the tax burden the way it is, but certainly a lot of messages in support of, you know, keeping our schools fully funded. Okay, so I see next, I believe that was Jason Ralph.
Can you hear me?
Yes, and if you'd like, you can even put yourself on video if you want.
No, thanks. So thanks for for having this meeting and letting me speak. There's a lot of confusion here. I think I pretty much understand how this transfer and back is working. But what I think is being obscured here is that you are assuming a not only a 2% increase in the PTT this year, but an additional 2% next year, despite the fact that the schools will have access to an additional $700,000 or $800,000 from the lack of the funding formula declines. And so regardless of which of which hand the money is coming from, which undesigned fund, you're still moving on this trajectory of 2% above previous year's PTT. And I'd like to see in the future, as we move away from this era of of funding formula declines, that we're able to start looking at a per pupil baseline and moving up with inflation from there and giving the giving the district the flexibility that it needs to service the the needs of the students. But since it does not have this huge yearly drop, that that's the only way that we we kind of get from here to there. Regardless of all these proposals, all end up with a total of 4% of increase over the next two years. And in that second year, I do think it would be it would be a good time to start the conversation of how the the school department looks at its at its budget and considers that that additional revenue that that they will have access to and and consider reducing the amount that they they ask for that year and helping them that way, just so that kind of we move we kind of move the the direction away from from this trajectory that's that's increasing our pupil cost, you know, beyond any any reasonability. And start to to consider that, you know, over the past decade, we have the town has supplemented the loss of state aid. And now that that's that that loss of state aid is is declining, it's time for a real conversation about what our long term plan is going forward. That's all I have.
Thank you, Jason. Next, I see this is a different phone number, I guess. Phone call from ends in 488.
This is Stacy Baudzoni. Hi, this is Stacy Baudzoni calling. Thank you. This is a late meeting and you're all working really hard. It does seem very confusing to me. I can understand why it's confusing, but it it is not confusing to me, actually. What I wanted to say is that from the 7:00 PM to the 7:30 PM portion of your meeting, Rob, did you say that the actual money for transportation had not yet left the town side and gone over to the school department? Right? So you still have it. So all of this talk about sending it back is kind of semantic, so it can just stay where it is. Instead of going to the school department and then being taken off of the amount of money that they'll be given next year? Am I incorrect?
So this is Rob Zarnetsky. It's one of the misunderstandings about the way the town school finance relationship works. We don't actually make a lump sum payment to the schools at the beginning of the year, and they don't stock a pot of money. We actually hold all of the money for all of the towns departments. We cut payroll checks for the school department. We really are only talking about an accounting shift and a legally consequential accounting shift. It's not just moving money around. What you call it matters.
Okay, thank you. So I just wanted to also say that I did hear some of you saying tonight that you received letters from people who are concerned about about their taxes. But you did all you did also receive letters from lots of folks in support of the school budget. They were all on the agenda. I saw them. I sent one. I know lots of people who did. So like Christie Fish, I do support the schools. And I think it's very important that especially at a time like this, that our commitment to our children doesn't change. What they need next year compared to what they needed last year may be even more. So we should not ever spend less on them or offer them less because of a situation that we're in, unless, of course, we don't have it. But as we saw, we do have it in our town and we can afford to do this. And it really is the right thing to do. They're the children and we can take care of them. Thank you. That's really all I had. Thank you.
I see Jocelyn, you are next. I think you need to unmute on your end, Jocelyn.
Got it now. Good evening. How are you?
Doing well.
Good. So, you know, it's been a long week in my life. It's been a long week, been a long eight weeks in my life. As a family nurse practitioner, I've seen things. I've done things and I know things that I hope nobody ever has to experience. So I'm just letting you know, it's tough. It's tough right now to be in healthcare. And it's tough right now to care for cradle to grave, which is what a family practitioner does. We care for people from zero to 100 and whatever. And that's what you're expected to do. You're expected to care for this community from birth to death. And this community, and I know it because I'm out there, is suffering greatly. I have been doing courtesy home visits for people in this community, particularly through the restaurant business, who have lost their jobs, who don't have health insurance, who can't provide food for their dinner tables, and who cannot afford to pay for healthcare. And they need help. And you need to help them. There's been a question about referendums and petitions in this town. We have built into our charter and we have built into our budget the process for individuals to petition the town council if they have a question or if they have an objection to a line item on the budget. That is our civic right. And you budget annually for the potential of a referendum. And when you budget for the referendum and it is not used, the money goes into undesignated funds, or it should. That is a civic right. It is not a reason if a citizen comes forward with 54 other signatories and asks you to consider a line item for an elected official in this town to abuse those petitioners or to call them the lowest common denominator or to call them hashtag jerks with pens. It's offensive, it's abusive. And this school committee has a history of abusing town council members, members of the public, petitioners and voters, and it's wrong. The purpose behind the petition was to reduce funding to the schools, because people are hurting. The schools need to reform programs to reduce their costs and they need to do it now. Not next year, not the year after, not over the next 10 years. They need to do it right now, because people in this town cannot put dinner on their table. The major issue right now in this town is trust, trust of elected officials. I'm sitting here after 30 years of living here, and that's a short time in South Kingstown history. And I only see two people in front of me right now who have the history in this community who know about the financial town meetings, why we went to a petition and referendum process, and that's Mike and Joe. All the rest of you are essentially new. You don't know this town. And until you've worked in it and been immersed with the community, you won't know it. It takes time. So I wish you good luck. I wish you a lot of hard thinking in this decision. I know this is a hard decision. But I'm out here in the community working and I'm telling you, people are hungry. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Jocelyn. I see Ed has his hand raised. And Ed, I believe you are muted on your end.
Hi, how you doing?
Good. Continue on.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. I I understand what the last person just said. But I think that understandably, a lot of people are hurting. But it's not an excuse to hurt the children in the school district by lowering the funding to the public schools. We have two children in the public schools. The schools themselves, the buildings are not in great shape. They need a lot of work. And I understand that this million dollars isn't going to fix all of that. But we really should be providing even more for the students in the public schools. We should be providing them clean drinking water, a clean place to stay, a nice building to be in. And for a lot of the kids, or for some of the kids, it is the safest part of their day. I don't understand how we can say that, you know, a lot of people are hurting, so we should hurt the kids more by not providing funding. Doesn't make sense to me. We should be providing as much funding as possible to make sure that the students are getting the greatest education that they possibly can. And that's all I have.
Ed, before you leave, could I just ask what your last name is for the public record?
Sure, Myzak. M is Mary, Y S is Sam, Z is zebra, A K is kite.
All right, thank you, Ed. I see the next hand raise is from Deb Burton. Deb, just unmute yourself at this point. I think you'll be good to go. You are live.
I'm live. You unmuted me?
Yes.
Okay. So first, to be very clear, I appreciate Ed speaking up. But the schools are fully funded with the budget they're presenting. So there isn't a no matter what happens with the petition up or down, the budget that the school presented in either plan would be fully fully funded. Just just because Ed presented it as there is a cut to the school budget. But the school actually has all the money it needs to fully fund the budget that they created. So but my remarks are this. When the council adopted the preliminary budget two weeks after the council met in emergency session, the the community was there and asking what the town was going to do about possibly changing the budget in light of the pandemic. And we were assured by the town manager that changes could be made later, that it was too soon to make any changes to be reactionary and we needed to gather more information. At the time, the town council asked about level funding, both the town council and the school. And we were told it was too soon to do that. The town council member asked if the school could come back with a 1% ask. And the school committee replied that they would have to go back and completely rebuild their budget. To my knowledge, they never did that rebuild. The handful of budget subcommittee meetings of the school committee were held at 5 o'clock and weren't recorded or livestreamed. Perhaps it was designed that way to limit public participation, clearly transparency as well. The town council president is a member of that subcommittee, but I don't recall, and maybe you did, report out on some of the findings of that subcommittee. And it's really important to know that that subcommittee recommended the budget to the council, and that's how we heard about it. We've now learned that the school committee has reported a savings of at least $1 million in transportation costs and likely other savings. And as of as of six hours ago, they had planned to take the money they saved and put it in their own bank. I do fully understand a new plan is in is being discussed. However, that plan makes no sense. I keep saying, if I can't explain it to my 79 year old mother, you shouldn't be doing that plan. Your plan of the shell game, it took many instructions of what you guys were doing. You are washing money around. I would prefer a cleaner approach. What is not clear to me, but is apparent, is that there is a strategic advantage for the school starting at a higher baseline. It is not known to the public why that is. That is clearly what the strategic goal is, to begin the school funding at a higher level. I'm not quite sure why, and if somebody could answer that, that would be great. Finally, to talk about the municipal budget, we have not yet heard any changes made on the municipal side. We know that the community has been hit hard. All of us know this. There really is no one that has not been impacted, and that is true. One second. The town has not changed its budget by $1 since the COVID epidemic. There are new positions. There are raises for department heads, one of which has been on the job six months. Someone else is getting a bump. And we have not heard about the town manager. I'm not sure if his salary is published in the budget and if he's getting an increase. We know that nationwide executives are taking pay cuts. There are pay freezes. I'm concerned why we are not hearing about personnel freezes, hiring freezes on the town side, or at least a delay. I would like to know if you are potentially going to put out any cuts, travel and conferences, fuel. We all know that heating oil is a bargain. If you haven't filled up your oil, you should. What are you passing on anything to the townspeople?
Thanks, Deb. Let me offer that.
I have just two more things. So finally, you're not really making an effort to convey that the town is doing their part. You're all saying you hear the impact on the community, but the town has yet to do something. Over and over on social media, we see lots of acts of kindness among our neighbors, generosity, people helping out, shopping, doing kind things. We need action from you, from us, that to us. What has gone on lately is truly an erosion of trust. We believe that our elected officials would do right by our community and make some changes, and we are not seeing them. Residents two years in a row are shamed for asking through a petition for a budget change by elected officials. This began the erosion. There is much more I could say. I think I might save it in community comment. But I hardly recognize my community. When we see these selfless acts from our own neighbors and the town itself is not acting to better our community, I am surprised that there is not a municipal reduction. I ask you to tune into the community and make the changes that will help all of us. Thanks.
Thank you, Deb. Rob, would you go over briefly? I mean, you know, I think for one thing, the budget has changed from the initial option, given the recommendations from the town manager. We'll see what gets adopted eventually. And I know that some changes have been made to the municipal side. But if you want to answer more of that, Rob, that would be good.
Just a couple of things. First, I do want to address the issue of where the advantage in this. It is admittedly a more complicated thing. It would be easier to say, keep the money from the transportation savings. We're not going to worry about that. Just keep it. We're going to zero out the property tax transfer this year. You still have $1 million and we're all set. The problem with that is it doesn't stretch the benefit of these windfalls, if you will, this revenue source. The undesignated fund in the school fund is gone in a year. And we don't have a way to, we haven't built in a way to address the property tax increase in the second year. The strategic advantage to making this a longer period of time, dealing with it over two years. The strategic advantage to making this a longer period of time, dealing with it over two years, is that we can address the spike that is inevitable under a one-year approach. There's going to be an inevitable. And to a point that an earlier caller, I think it was Jason Ralph made, we also know that we're likely to see a different structure for the revenue streams for the schools next year, which changes our ability to, improves our ability to address future spending and reduces the need for future refunds. So our taking the million dollars this year keeps our fund balance at $13.5 million, and that is an advantage because we can, we can have the flexibility that comes with that. And then next year, when we have to address avoiding a spike in the tax rate because we did do some deficit spending this year under either proposal, we will have a lower expense pattern because we're going to have revenues that aren't going to disappear from the states. So it's just a better environment for us to be then putting in our undesignated fund balance to cover the difference between what a reasonable increase may be and what people can afford. You know, we, we have to think about this in two years, and that's why making the, this, this flip-flopping, it's been called, or this money washing is important because we need to get the money in the right places in order to be able to set ourselves up for the second year. On municipal reductions, we have changed the budget substantially since the initial manager's proposal. The initial proposal was looking for a property tax increase of 1.6%. And this proposal, both the one on the 15th and 16th, and the one, the modified version of that we've made tonight, have a 0% property tax increase. It is true that there are two new positions in this budget. We've described those as positions that are necessary because of deficiencies in the program. We do not have, excuse me, we do not have someone in the animal shelter who we have a management regime there. We don't have a management regime at the animal shelter that makes that program as modern as it needs to be. We need to make sure that we've got management in the animal shelter that is taken care of, a very complicated, has become a very complicated program in terms of caring for the animals, managing finances on a couple of fronts, and monitoring the operations outside of the shelter and working with the folks who go out and about in the streets, collecting stray animals and that sort of thing. This is a pretty important function for people who know and care about animals. And if we're going to be in the business of running an animal shelter, we have an obligation to do it right. Could that be postponed? It comes at an expense. We could, I suppose, not hire a management person for the animal shelter, but that would mean that we continue to have issues with the facility that we've identified that need to be addressed. In terms of the other position, it's a halftime position to deal with personnel. And again, we have operated without a full personnel team for quite some time. Could we put it off further? I suppose we could, but the program suffers. We don't have all of the components of a good, modern personnel system that we could have if we had the people to do the work. We do not, for example, have a training program. You had mentioned, you know, cutting conferences. We don't attend conferences by and large. I don't know the last time that I've had, well, no, I take that back. I can think of the one now. But it's a very rare occurrence when we send somebody to a conference, certainly a conference out of the state of Rhode Island. This isn't, the, the town government is not built around training. The town government is not built around professional development. And that's in large part because we are not built to do personnel in the way that modern personnel shops operate. In order to begin to modernize the shop and begin focusing on the development of our human resources, the training of our personnel, and the setting of standards that, that allow our people to become professionals who participate in things like conferences, we need to start shifting the program. Amy Reiner has been heading up our personnel shop as the administrative director in the town hall, but it's one of many functions, and it draws away from other, many other important things that she does. So, yes, it could be put off. It's been put off this long. Has the program suffered because it, it has? And, you know, council's got to make some decisions. Our recommendation to the council is that that not be stricken from the budget. It's a $45,000 line item. It's not a line item that makes a big difference in a program that costs on the municipal side $25 million in the total program, over 80, somewhat 85 million dollars. But it could make a big difference in the quality of the service that the people of the town of South Kingstown get. If we're able to train our people and we're able to get people involved in professional development, the services that the public receives improve. So, yes, we can save $45,000 and not do it. Are we actually doing the public that we serve any benefit that way? I, I don't think so.
Thank you, Rob. I see Dan North up has his hand. Can EB brought into the meeting?
Yes, you should see him in a moment, Ebo.
Okay. So he just
Think he might have been disconnected, or let's try this again with him. Sorry about that.
All right, Dan, currently, I believe you are muted at your end. If you could unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, everyone, for the counsel. You guys are doing a phenomenal job. I can't even imagine the, you know, the effort it takes to stand through what you're standing through. I've been watching these meetings for several months now, honestly, and it's really come to a head with me tonight in regards to listening to the budgets for the last three and a half hours, to include your work session. You know, you guys, you guys selected Rob for, as our town manager. And I have a little insight in the fact of, I know this budget was built from ground up. That took a lot of fortitude. It took a lot of work, and it started last year. He, he's getting beat up, and I think he's done a phenomenal job of providing all the information that's needed to be out there. That's why he's there. That's why he was hired. We have some phenomenal financial directors in there who are explaining numbers. You know, and, and that's why they're there, and that's why they have the jobs they have. I don't think anyone's being fraudulent. I think everything's on the face that it is, that it needs to be. And I just, we need to, we need to get this through and move on. These are terrible times for every household, and I can't be any more compassionate than anyone in this town. But we still have to do the job and provide the services for the children that, that we're expected to. And it comes in the coattails sometimes of the taxpayers. I've lived in this town for 50 or going on 52 years. So, yes, I am a townie. Please do the best you can. All the information's there. Make the right decision for the best of everyone's child in the community. I appreciate your time and thank you for this time of my comment.
Is there anybody else who would like to make a public comment? I see Tara Apperson. And Tara, you are still muted. If you unmute yourself, you'll be good.
Got it. Hi.
Hello.
All right. So hi, this is Tara Apperson. So, um, thank you again for this thoughtful, long process. It is pretty late. I'm pretty tired, so I'll do the best I can. I'm sure you guys are tired too. So, um, I'm hearing things like now is not the time to add positions, and schools need to tighten their belts because everybody does. But it just doesn't work that way. If we only think of the bottom line, we're doing a disservice to our students. We still need to support our children when they go back to school, and those positions and supports specifically help to support our student, our most vulnerable students. Our schools are a service to our town, and we have to carry on this service despite this pandemic. I appreciated what Rob said tonight, that cutting a specific dollar amount isn't going to solve the problems that are perceived. It'll just cause more harm than good. And continuing to do the work, and there is work to be done, is what's going to get us where we want to be. So just, you know, naming a dollar amount and changing where and how we're going to fund that is not going to change the things that folks want to see change. And I want to add that I'm not sure why community members who are in favor of the budget don't seem to factor into the comments of some of the council when you're hearing from us during public comment, and when you are hearing from us in emails. When I look at the emails you've received and the calls that you've taken, you've heard from a lot of people with a lot of differing opinions. There's definitely different opinions about how our town should be spending money. I mean, that's, that's no secret. There always are, there always are going to be, but it does seem disingenuous to only speak about the public you're hearing from that support what seems to be your view of the budget without acknowledging that you're hearing from multiple different viewpoints. So, uh, just in closing, I support the plan that's been presented tonight. I think it'll take a lot of trust and collaboration between the town and the school department. I am hopeful, and I do think we have the right leadership to continue down this path. So, thank you again for all your work, and good luck tonight with your vote.
Thank you, Tara. I see that Gary Chapman is next in line.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. The screen just left all of a sudden. Now it's back. Okay. The, the first question I have is for, I, I guess, Zachary, someone had asked you earlier tonight about the, the surplus that the town was going to have this year, and I know you, you talked about, you know, how it was going to be used and not. But I don't remember if you had, had told us what you thought it was tracking to be.
Sorry.
You have a, a figure where you think it's going to end up?
I don't have an exact figure right now, just because it's still a little too hard to tell. I think it will be a small surplus in the general fund. But I don't
You got the, the snow plowing, right? And, and, and isn't the EMS, the money that we put in last year's budget for the EMS, isn't, I, I thought the billings were, were pretty much paying for themselves. So is, is that not counted as a surplus too?
Well, that's not, if it, it covers itself, what will, it'd be a surplus if we exceed that revenue amount, and we were on pace, but then that revenue has tapered off. I have the, I've been working with the EMS director to track the revenue that we do collect. But because people aren't using transports to, you know, the hospital are down right now in the last, you know, probably eight weeks, just because there is fear of going to the hospital. So that revenue that we thought would be going up is now starting to plateau a little bit. But there could be a pickup, you know, what we're hearing potentially could be a pickup in that revenue. So we're, I don't want to throw a number out there in the public and then, you know, have it be wrong or have people rely on that and, you know, make decisions. So we're trying to track that and then, you know, come up with a, you know, to the manager, what we think would be, you know, closer to where it is in line. It's, you know, talking to our billing contractor and trying to get, you know, information from them as it, as it does track. And then there is a slight delay, but we're working diligently to do that.
Okay, thank you. Then, the, Rob, in, in your slides that you were showing earlier, you didn't, you didn't have in there, you, you had the 700,000 at the reduction in state aid. But, but there was nothing in there about after last year's budget, when, when the budget was finalized, they, the school department found approximately $512,000, I think, and, and that was spent. I mean, that, that's not in there. I mean, if that was saved, that would have been an offset to the 700, and, and really, the impact is really only 200. But what it hap, what happens is, is that when it's spent now, it becomes part of the bottom line, and, and taxpayers are paying even more again. So I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure I have a lot of confidence in the way you, you want to do this now. Anyway, the, the, I guess the other, the, the other part of it is, is that I'm trying to figure out how, how you actually do this in a budget document. I mean, are you going to add a line to the budget called transfer to the town from the schools? That, that might be at first.
So, Mr. President, if I may, it's actually not. We take interdepartmental transfers quite often. We didn't have one this year in the proposed budget. We don't have one before tonight in, in the budget this year. But we did have one last year. I think it was $400,000 came from the schools to the town as a departmental transfer. Zach, do you recall the amount on that departmental transfer? I'm just operating from my recollection of the budget document itself, but I think last year's school transfer to the town was $400,000.
And what was that for?
It was actually probably tied to retirement or benefits. Do you recall, Zach? I'm just, I'm going back through my recollection of the revenue sources in our budget last year. And the transfer from the, from the school district.
I'm, I'm looking, I'm trying to look that up right now.
Yeah.
So, so is, is there an actual line in the, in the, in the revenue end of it, Rob?
From last year, there was, yes.
Okay. Okay. So, so that, is that how you would do it this year, to tonight, when you pass the budget, you would add a line, a revenue line? Is that how it would work?
We could do it that way. I mean, again, these are all sort of just paper transfers. The town basically sits on, on, on our accounts. The money, to the extent that we actually have cash, is in investments in banks. And the money that we use for making payroll to the schools, or that the school uses for construction projects or anything else, is all approved through the town finance department. So it's really just, it's just paper movement. It's not, it's not actually transferring dollars or putting money from our bank to theirs.
No, no, I understand that, but I'm just trying to figure out how the, the budget document looks. Like, in other words, if I were to look at the budget document, I mean, I, I would think that, well, the numbers should add up and balance. So I wanted to see where that, where that would, 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 would be. Because if you're going to pass a budget tonight, I would think that, you know, we want the, the budget to balance. And so there has to be a line covering
That's true. There, there will have to be a revenue line associated with the funds coming from the school department. It will be assigned a line. And the contingency is that the school department would have to make a transfer of the amount identified on that line to the town.
Okay. And then on one, one of the slides, it said, the, the, it said that the town, I think I remember seeing it, I can't remember exactly, but it, something about the town backs up the schools for COVID-related expenses. What, what does that mean?
So, the original design in our fifth, April 15th and 16th amendment package was to leave the transportation savings in the school department. and to make a transfer of another million dollars to the school department to cover the operational expenses. The original rationale there was, given the uncertainty, they're gonna either need the money or it's a good thing, it's a safe practice to have undesignated fund balance on their books for them to be able to spend not just $2 million if they need it, but to spend 3, 3.4 million dollars is what we were anticipating that might be at the time. The concern or one of the concerns that the school department responded to was the expression by members of the community that they were double dipping essentially, that they were getting a million dollars in savings and they're getting a million dollars for undesignated fund. So the resolution of that concern was to have the school transfer the million dollars in savings back to the town so that they weren't getting double dip. They were just getting the transfer and not getting the savings and the transfer. Now, the reason we chose to go that way instead of just letting them keep the savings is, as we've described a couple of times now, it is easier for us to control the 3.5 million dollars on the town side if we don't, if we get a transfer from the schools. And that means that we will have more money to work with, another tool to work with in 2020, 2021. So it's really just a way to extend the offset of property tax revenue. This year, we were going to offset property tax revenue with money from the undesignated fund balance. We don't need to do that if they're providing the million dollars for that offset, which means that come the year of the spike, 2020, 2021, we will have the ability to use undesignated fund balance to smooth the transition back into an era where taxes are not held constantly zero. We're not going to be able to hold taxes at zero for two straight years. We're gonna have to deal with either changes in our program because COVID hasn't gone away or we're going to have to begin to deal with the fact that inflation does, has been for, for all of history anyway, does continue to cost the, cause an increase in the expense of most things. True. Heating oil right now is lower. That's a very strange aberration. And, you know, everything else does continue to go up. We've got to deal with that fact eventually.
Yeah.
Gary, sorry, you run your three minutes to its end. So if you can raise your hand and get back at the back of the line. The next person in line is Deb Burner. She has already had her opportunity to speak. She actually has posted three questions in the Q and A stream. If you could call those up, Rob, maybe answer those.
Yeah, I've got them. Thank you. So Rob didn't answer my question. Will the town manager get a raise? I don't know. That is not my call. Are non-contract raises in the budget? The answer is yes, there are non-contract employees who will get raises. And in fact, the practice here in South Kingstown is for our non-union employees and non-contract is non-union in most cases. The non-union employees typically are kept sort of on, in parity with the union contracts. And there's, you know, advantages to the municipality in terms of cost savings to do that. If there were no parity between people doing the same work, then no one would choose ever to be non-union. And we would not have the flexibility that we have with that non-union workforce, not only on pay issues, but on, you know, just general managerial issues. So yes, there are non-contract raises in the budget. There are contract raises or union wage raises in the budget as well. We can't avoid the union issues. This question has come up quite a bit over the course of the last week. The challenge on negotiating with unions, and I know, Deb, this isn't your question, but I'm going to seize on the opportunity to answer it because it is an important question that people have been asking. If we were to go to the table right now or call unions to the table right now, it's the fiduciary duty of union representatives to make sure that their employees are not taking a haircut unnecessarily or inappropriately. And if I were a union rep coming to the table in this environment, my first question would be, do you have the ability to pay? Because that's the rule. The rule is if you have the ability to pay, you have to meet your contractual obligations. And they would point to our undesignated fund balance, which is very healthy. And they'd say, you have the ability to pay. So why would we let you off your contract? And if we didn't have the ability to pay for whatever reason, the next question would be, okay. If you're gonna ask us to take some, make some sort of concession now, what are you proposing to give us in the future? So negotiating reductions in a unionized environment doesn't yield, doesn't necessarily yield any real savings. It's not a, it's not a great strategy for reducing costs. Then on the issue of the non-union folks who work in the same environment with those folks, again, if we take it all out on their, and out of their hides, then there's no incentive for anyone to remain non-union ever. And we'd end up with everybody being in the universe that I just previously described. What's budgeted for the finance department? Essentially, the finance department is, it's really just personnel. There's not anything detailed in there. I'll let Zach answer for himself in a second. There is a position for the deputy finance director. We had a position that served in the function, served the function of a deputy finance director. She left that position several months ago and it's a vacancy. It's actually a very important function in an office that, as I just described, manages many of the business transactions and financial transactions for all of the departments of the town, including the school department. Having that position vacant has been a hardship for the department and is potentially, and eventually anyway, going to interfere with the operation of the department if it's not backfilled. We need to, we need to fill that position. There are some positions that you can let go. Having more than one person in the finance department with this level of professional training is essential. It needs to happen. Finance administrator, that is the same position. I see what you're getting at. Yes, that was the finance administrator. Are both budgeted? No, just the one, the deputy finance director. Also, what is the strategic advantage to raising the baseline to the schools? So there really isn't a strategic advantage. This is, this concern in this area, I think I understand. There's folks who really do focus a lot of energy on the property tax transfer baseline and are concerned that it is the only way that you can measure the level of effort in the next fiscal year. And that's kind of true, but let's take this year's property tax baseline. So if we did a property tax transfer this year of 54.9 million dollars, which is what we did, and we increase that by 2%, that's a million dollars, we'd get to 55.99 next year. But we don't have to do that as a 2% increase next year. The baseline doesn't have to be the 54.9 because the state statute allows us some flexibility there. You can have a lower property tax transfer if that's what meets the needs of the program and that's what the folks setting the needs of the program decide. So there's not a strategic advantage. The, the folks who think there's an advantage are only looking at the PTT each year as the only possible measure of maintenance of effort. And it's not the only possible measure of, of maintenance of effort.
Thank you, Rob. Next on our list, oh, Zach, did you have anything to add about the finance department positions?
No, Rob was correct in that it was only one position is being budgeted for, the deputy finance director. It was just listed in the positions that are available. So if there was a change and it wasn't approved, we still had the FTE for the finance manager.
Thank you. All right, Roberta Mohom. Hold on, Roberta, we're pulling you in here. That's, there we go. You should, if you unmute now, Roberta, you should be okay.
Now you can hear, right?
Yes.
Bye. Thanks, Abel. I wanted to go back to what Rob was talking about, that yes, the law allows the school committee next year to start at a lower baseline. And my question is, and I don't think Rob knows because he hasn't been here very long, how often does that happen?
So this is Rob Zanetsky. I've reviewed past budgets. I don't think I have seen a budget where it's happened. And it's also, just as a clarification, it's not that the maintenance of effort is established by the school committee. Maintenance of effort is established by the council.
So is it correct to the council? Is it correct that if the school committee comes back next year with 55.9 million, you can say to them, nope, let's, we're gonna start at 54.9? Is that correct?
This is Abel. I think, yeah, technically, we would have to, to do that, we would need to redefine the way where we calculate maintenance and that would be a decision we can make on an annual basis or, you know, whatever councils here would be able to make that decision. But then what you would, what we would potentially do is, you know, figure out what the per pupil spending is in the per property tax transfer from the previous year. You know, based on student decline, what would the same property tax transfer be in that next year? That would be how you would look at, determine what that number is.
Right. And, and, and so I just want to say that the, the charts and the money coming back and going back and going in and going out. I agree with, I think it was Bryant that said, or whoever said, just leave the money there. Leave their surplus. Let them spend it. Put it in their budget. If they come back because they do need more, whatever they need, then they come back to you for that. But this kind of shifting the money around, it just, it doesn't feel good. I keep wanting to know who, is this legal? What, why? I've never seen this done in South Kingstown. I'm sitting here thinking, gosh, I never heard Steve Alfred comment the very last minute with a plan like this. And it doesn't feel good. It just doesn't. And it's not that I think there's a lot of distrust of the school committee. I don't think there's a lot of distrust of our town council. I am particularly discouraged. And I will say that when I was younger, I used to wonder why older people seemed discouraged. And I think I get it now because after so many years, at either hearing no or, or just not getting responses, you do get discouraged. But, but to think, for any person to think that there are people in this town who don't care about our public education, I think that's so far-fetched and, and hurtful. Of course, we want a good public education. But as I said in my email to you, we have entire industries that are just in crises they've never experienced. And I will, I will direct this to the fishing industry that I have worked in for over 30 years. Our fishing industry supports a lot of people in our town. It's not just in the point. It's our town. Our taxpayers, renters, shoreside businesses, and they are hurting beyond what anyone really can understand. I have many clients and businesses who, who worry. They worry their business will be lost. It's not bad economic time that they feel that they can maybe come back from. So yes, I care about those people. I care about education. I care about the people who've lived here forever. And I hope that you do too. And I hear it tonight and I'm really happy to hear that from our, our elected officials that you, that you do care about everyone. And just finally, Mike, I don't know how you're out there in the daylight in Providence. But, you know, can you bring the sunshine down here? Thank you all. Thank you all for your time.
Roberta. Next, I see a phone number that ends in 989. And you should be good to go.
Hi, this is Jimmy Blakely. And I just had a few comments. It's been a long night, I know for all of you. I want to say thank you to everyone there on this panel. Really appreciate the time and effort you're putting in. I actually am encouraged. I've been following some of these meetings and I feel that it's really encouraged me that our town is run well. I appreciate the fact that our town does have a surplus, that we have this undesignated fund that is well-funded and that, you know, we're in a strong position financially and that everyone is very financially aware and, and responsible. So I'm very encouraged by that. From looking to all this, I feel that the proposal is reasonable. I think that it makes sense. You know, I don't feel that it's anything shady at all. It, it's just a way for us to, to manage the, the money and manage the situation that, that can work for the school and work for the town. You know, if we end up in a situation, I think there's a lot of speculation out there right now. And obviously, everybody's really stressed and hurting in a lot of cases. But the speculation's really not relevant here. We don't know. We don't know what's gonna happen. And the fact that we're in a solid financial position makes us flexible. And that's a great thing for us as a town. I appreciate it and thank you all.
Thank you. All right. Next, I'm gonna go to Jessica Rose or Jess Rose. And then, Deb, I don't know if your hand is just still up from before, but since you got to speak before.
Hi, guys. Thank you so much for all of the work that you're doing here. It's certainly not easy right now. So I want to kind of restate what Tara Apperson said. There have been a lot of emails sent that the comments from, from the town council members tonight reflected much of what was said from people who are in support of the school budget as proposed. And as I had a chance to go through some of those emails, one really stuck out to me. So I just want to take a second and read that. This is from Paula Whitford and it's on behalf of the PCL Leadership Council. Dear Town Council Members, the PCL Leadership Council was founded two years ago as part of the Johnny K. Center's Community Health Outreach Work. This past January, we met with you and discussed how our town could address the systemic gaps that have persisted in our community for decades. One of our top priorities is making our school district one that supports our children from the time that they enter the school system to the time that they graduate. This includes out-of-school time activities for both after-school and summer, which we have successfully secured ourselves through the Boys and Girls Club of Newport with generous funding from the town council. Since Superintendent Savastano came on board, we have for the first time checked in the system. We believe that she is listening and digging into the data in order to make things better for our community. We have hope. We believe that she is listening and digging into the data in order to make things better for our community. We have hope. Please adopt the budget that she has presented and do not force her hand to make cuts that will be a further insult and injury to our children. The breakdown of the areas that would be most impacted if the town council does not move forward with approving the budget as presented includes special education, social emotional, health, STEM, and career tech. The PCL leadership believes that if these areas are cut, the unknown gaps and outcomes between racial and socioeconomic subgroups in South Kingstown will persist and continue to grow. As a community, it is our responsibility to look at every expense as it relates to student data and build goals together based on data linked to student outcomes. Please support the school budget as it has been presented. Thank you for our service, your service to our town. And this is signed by ten additional people. So I just wanted to share that. I think it's important to keep all of that in consideration. And that's all. Thanks, guys.
All right, I see that we have no more comments from attendees at this point. Are there final thoughts before we close the public hearing on the budget? From council? We can also make final comments if there's a motion to pass the budget as well. All right. All right, Zach, you have your hand raised, but I'm assuming that's just...
I just wanted to provide a follow-up to one of the questions that was asked. It was from Gary. The revenue that is brought back from the schools or charged back from the schools, it was about a hundred and sixty-five thousand for the budget in twenty, and that represents, you know, field maintenance, the town provides payroll and accounting services, the interfund, you know, we share the same IT system or IT platform. So it's their portion of their charge for that, and then also the school resource officers. And in fiscal twenty-one, we proposed a hundred and eighty-four thousand.
Thank you, Zach. All right. Then seeing no other comments from among us, do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
This is Debbie Kelso, a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Okay, so we have a motion by Deb, and a second by Bryant. Again, do a roll call vote, so.
Also, President Collins.
Aye.
Council Vice President DeCruz.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kelso.
Aye.
Councilwoman McEntee.
Aye.
Councilman Bealy.
Aye.
That is unanimous.
Yes, unanimous, we have to close the public hearing. And do I hear a motion on seven A? And Rob, we may need your help in terms, or maybe Mike?
Yes, and we also need to deal, before we get to your motion, we need to deal with a conflict that Deb Kelso has. There's a certain part of the budget that she cannot vote on under the rule of ethics. It relates to the finance director and salary and benefits for the finance director. There's an ethics rule, one point three one B three, that basically states that you can't vote on a compensation package for someone who you're related to. So the first thing we need to do is, we need to take out the section relative to the finance director in the budget. It's line, it's sections fifty-one, zero, zero, one to fifty-two, two, eight, five, zero. Those are all of the line items relative to the salary and benefits and compensation package for the finance director. So when you do make a motion, we need to carve that out, and then that would be voted on separately afterwards.
That's clear. Mike, Joe Vili here. We also need to, on outside agencies, separate out the Southern Island Chamber of Commerce.
Because you are the director there.
Correct.
Good, okay. So when we make a motion to, if the motion's going to be to approve seven A as amended, we are going to do it minus those two items.
And I have another question. I don't know who this is for, but how do we deal with the petition?
Yeah, so the petition, you can actually vote on that first if you desire because that, it would be an amendment to the budget. So someone would first move the petition, and then depending on what happens with that, you would go on to the, the budget itself minus those two carve-outs. The petition's actually an amendment to the budget, so you should take the amendments first.
So this is Rob. Am I muted or not?
We can hear you.
Okay, so there are, I guess, one, two, three, four amendments, it looks like to me. Is that, is that your count, Mr. President?
Well, there, so we discussed the six thousand five hundred, was it for the history?
South County History Center.
History Center. So that's one. There's, assuming people, I mean, I think first, what makes sense is to, to take up the proposed petition. And then we can follow that up by taking up the other.
I, I would agree with that, Abel. It's Mike Orsola, yes.
All right, do I hear a motion, let me read the wording, just so. So a motion on shall line item number zero one one zero nine eight dash four one two one zero, entitled Property Tax Transfer to the School Fund in the Amount of fifty-five million, nine hundred and ninety-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars, reduced by the sum of one million, ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars to the amount of fifty-four million, eight hundred and ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars for the purpose of reducing property tax. Do I hear a motion on that? Can be either up or down.
So, Mr. President, this is Rob Zanetski. I'm gonna jump in, and Mike, you can correct me, but because this is a petition and because the charter specifically states that the council shall consider, is a motion necessary, or is this on the table for consideration even without a motion?
The council's gonna have to vote it up or down. And, and Abel's right, the, the motion could either be to deny it or to accept it. But one way or another, the council must move on it because depending on what the council does this evening, it could trigger other actions subsequently.
Rory McEntee, I'll make a motion to reject the petition.
Second. Debbie Kelso, second.
Yep, made a motion by Rory, and a second by Deb to reject the petition. Any discussion? All right, you know, I think, you know, the town manager has proposed an alternative solution, which I, I think is preferable from my point of view, so I'll vote in favor of this motion. All in favor, say aye.
Well, now you need to do a roll call.
Yep.
Thank you, Michael. Council President Collins.
Aye.
Council Vice President DeCruz.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kelso.
Aye.
Councilman McEntee.
Aye.
Councilman Bealy.
No.
By a vote of four to one, that motion carries. So let's consider the other amendments that we've talked about. The sixty-five hundred for the South County History Center. Do I hear a motion on that?
So it's Debbie Kelso. I'll, I'll make a motion to approve or to add the sixty-five hundred dollars to the South County History Center to the outside agency.
Can I ask a question on this?
Once we have, you know, a second.
I'll second that.
All right, so a motion from Deb and a second from Bryant. So discussion on this item?
Rory McEntee, a quick question. I know as we talked about this earlier, we had, it appeared we had the majority to fund, fully fund all requests made by outside service agencies. Is that sixty-five hundred dollar amount allocated to the South County History Center? Does that satisfy fully funding every request made by outside service agencies with the exception of SK Village Trust?
That's a good question. I think Amy...
Amy would like to speak.
Yeah.
We should see her in a second.
Here she is.
There she is.
Just unmute yourself. You gotta unmute yourself, Amy.
Amy Ryan, our Director of Administrative Services. I have the chart up in front of me, and if the council wishes to fully fund all of the agencies who received funding this year at the increased, some of them increased, proposed, as well as the one new agency, that would total one hundred sixty-three thousand, five hundred seventy dollars, which is an increase over the proposed of thirty-five hundred dollars.
So we need to find thirty-five hundred dollars elsewhere in the budget. Contingency and undesignated fund are the most logical, certainly the easiest.
Say that it'd be a good idea to take from the contingency.
Right, so I'm confused a little bit. Is the motion right now to approve that section or just to add the South County History Center to the, to the budget?
So what are we talking about?
Your motion is specific to the sixty-five hundred, but there were another approximately thirty-five hundred, it sounds like, of just small increases from other agencies.
So is it appropriate for me to amend my motion to include the added monies that we needed, the thirty-five hundred? So my motion would be to add the South County History Center and an additional thirty-five hundred to fully fund everyone that's there. Is that what, where we need to go here? Mike?
If that's what...
Yeah, this is Mike speaking. It wasn't clear to me in Amy's description if there was both thirty-five and sixty-five. Amy, are we talking about ten thousand dollars in increase?
No, we would simply need to increase the proposed amount by thirty-five hundred dollars.
Okay, so I need to withdraw my motion then, correct?
Correct, and make a new one.
Right.
And before you make it, Deb, Mike, do we need to eliminate or separate the Southern Island Chamber of Commerce at this point as well, because it's an outside agency in this?
I didn't realize. The answer is yes, we need to separate that out because Joe is recusing on that portion. And so the vote will be on adding the thirty-five hundred, a vote on everything except the Rhode Island Chamber, the Southern Rhode Island Chamber of Commerce.
So I, I will make my motion, what Mike just said.
Okay.
One question on the motion. The source of funds is...
Contingency.
Contingency.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion tonight. It's clear as mud, right? Yes, we have a motion. We have a second. Any further comment on this one? All right, again, roll call vote, please.
Council President Collins.
Aye.
Council Vice President DeCruz.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kelso.
Aye.
Councilman McEntee.
Aye.
And Councilman Bealy.
Aye.
It is unanimous.
And Mike, should we deal with?
Yes, so now someone needs to make a motion that Joe cannot participate in to fund, as presented in the budget, the Southern Rhode Island Chamber of Commerce.
Hey, there's my next motion, what Mike said.
Second, Bryant. We have a motion and second, Deb, Bryant, I'll say, any discussion on this one? On, well, we'll take a roll call vote.
Council President Collins.
Aye.
Council Vice President DeCruz.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kelso.
Aye.
Councilman McEntee.
Aye.
And Councilman Bealy.
I will recuse.
Thank you.
All right, that motion passes unanimously. So...
Actually, four, four votes and one recusal.
So, Rob, now, there's amendments to the budget that, the wording for which I'm at a loss for.
So I'm gonna put on the screen the First Amendment that I think needs to be done. So from current slide, and that's not gonna work. So that is the language of the First Amendment.
Okay, do I hear a motion on this one?
I, I have a few questions. Should I wait for the motion, after the motion?
Yes, I, I mean, I think we can take up this language, amend it if we see fit, or in, you know, if people aren't convinced that it's the right amendment for the budget, then it can get voted down.
So is the motion to approve the budget with this First Amendment? Or is the motion to add this amendment to the budget?
I think it's to add this amendment to the budget.
This is Mike Orsola. I would agree with that.
Okay, so I, I will make the motion to add this amendment to the budget.
Do I hear a second?
No.
I'll second that motion.
Can I ask my questions now?
Yes.
All right, here's my question, Rob. The latest recommendation that you've made is not what is detailed out in this amendment right here. Now, would we have to adopt this first amendment here and then make a change after the fact and do another amendment if we were in fact to move in the direction that you recommended most recently?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes. This does not accomplish the contingency for getting the monies transferred from the school department. That's correct. The part B of this amendment will have to be played, worked with, if that's what the council wants to do. The whole apparatus here tonight is, excuse me, trying to get back to where I can see you. So yes, Rory, you're right. This language needs to be... So yes, Rory, you're right. This language needs to be modified in order to get to the place where the contingency is done. There are two ways you could do that. One is simply by changing Section B or Part B of this amendment. The other way it could be done is by dealing with the longer conditional amendment that was described earlier as being the transportation month by month. We could do it either way, but we've got to get to a point where the savings from the healthcare benefits and the contingency are done. So really, this is being put there so you've got something to talk about. You have to decide how you want to go and modifying B on this will let you do that.
Look, can we break out A?
You could, yes.
I would suggest we break out A and vote on that.
That's easy.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Okay, so that's a, you know, a motion to amend this amendment, correct, Mike, or?
So, so why don't, this is Mike. Deb, why don't you withdraw your motion and make a new one that only includes item A?
Okay, so I withdraw my first motion and I will make a new motion that only includes item A from the manager's first proposed, of the manager's first proposed amendment.
Second, Bryant.
A motion by Deb and a second by Bryant. Let's, any discussion on this? All right, can we have a roll call vote? You're muted, Susan.
I'm muted, sorry. Council President Collins.
Aye.
Council Vice President De Cruz.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kelso.
Aye.
Councilman McEntee.
Aye.
And Councilman Bealy.
Aye.
And just a unanimous vote.
Thank you. All right, further amendments. Rob, I'm looking at you.
I'm working through, I'm trying to get B now to a clean place for you guys. Give me two seconds here and I'll be able to do that for you.
Mr. President, if I may, Deb was correct. We do actually need to add in the sixty-five hundred for the South County History Center. So if, while we're waiting for the town manager to do his calculations, we can vote on that. My apologies, Deb, you are correct.
That's right. You had mentioned it was a ten thousand dollar increase and the thirty-five hundred and the sixty-five hundred did the math. The math was correct, so we'll fix that.
So Deb, you can make a motion now to add the sixty-five hundred with the money coming from contingency.
Okay, so I'll make the motion to add the sixty-five hundred for the South County History Center with the money coming from contingency.
Second, Bryant.
Motion by Deb, second by Bryant. Any, now, my question is, this is the outside agency again, but we've already voted on the rest of the agencies, is that right, Mike? So we don't have to worry about Joe now, at this point, you can vote on this.
Correct, we don't have to worry about Joe now.
Very good. Any further discussion on this amendment? All right, let's take a roll call vote.
Council President Collins.
Aye.
Council Vice President De Cruz.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kelso.
Aye.
Councilman McEntee.
Aye.
Councilman Bealy.
Aye.
And that is unanimous.
Thank you again. Rob, you have some proposed language. I've got to figure out how to share.
All right. So Zach, are you with us still? Zachary?
Yes, I am.
Right, so the only blank I think that we have to deal with in Mike and Zach, the only blank that I think we've got to deal with is we do need to have a line for general revenue to which the transfer from the school department would come.
Rob, this is Mike speaking. I think you have the language down properly. All we need to do is fill in that line number.
Right.
Because it's, it is contingent, it's the amount referenced, it is contingent. So the school committee needs to act or else it doesn't get it.
Right, so the, the structure of the amendment is that you give them a zero percent increase until you receive the funding back for the savings from the, from the, the transportation contract. Once that happens, then we are authorized to make an additional property tax transfer of that amount, which is the two percent on top of the fifty-four million, fifty-four eight, fifty-four nine. So Zach, all I need is that, that general fund revenue number.
All right, I think that we have enough of an idea to know what we're voting on, correct, Mike? And we can fill in that number or do we need it now?
Yeah, you're right. The number's not critical. The concept is well presented. It is clearly a contingent transfer. You're beginning by giving the school committee exactly what you gave them last year. And then on a contingent basis, you're saying you'll transfer the one million ninety-seven thousand upon them authorizing the transfer to the town.
Very good. So do I hear a motion on this amendment to the budget?
I'll make a motion to reject this amendment.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. A motion by Bryant, a second by Joe to reject this amendment. Discussion.
So my comment is that this, this is taxpayer money that we allocated to the school department that they allocated to a transportation that they didn't need. It is taxpayer money and I think especially a sizable amount like this, if, if, if the taxes, the intended use wasn't a need, it belongs to the taxpayers and without some sort of an explanation and, and, I mean, this is some sort of an explanation, but not, you know, bottom line, I think the school department needs to control spending and that's, and they haven't succeeded in that. And, and I think this transfer, if we, if we agree to make the transfer, then we're saying it's okay to not increase your spending and I don't think it's okay.
Any further?
Yes, Bryant speaking. I can see Joe's point. My reasoning's a little bit different. I would prefer, and I think the right thing to do is to, for us to lower, I'm sorry, for us to allow them to keep the savings that was allocated from the previous or this year's budget. You know, once we approve their budget, they use their money whichever way they want to use it technically. That's the control or how we're set up here in South Keystone. So I am okay with them keeping the funds to utilize for their budget as they choose fit. They could choose to put it into their undesigned funds or they could choose to use it for programming and then do level funding from the town from this year's budget to next year's budget.
All right, very good. Any?
I've got some thoughts, you know, I'd like to express. I might as well get them out now. Rory McEntee. First off, you know, I would like to acknowledge the difficult times experienced by all. The economic effects of the pandemic has reached all sectors and all industries, both private and public. And South Keystone is no exception. The taxpayers, both commercial and residential, are facing financial distress. We, as the town council, understand that and cannot contribute to further economic hardship in any way. The town currently has the ability to waive interest on overdue quarterly tax payments, provided that certain criteria is met. And the town council will request enabling legislation allowing for the deferral of commercial property tax payments due. The town is prepared for any situation. Department heads have been directed to prepare contingency plans, which call for the reduction of their respective budgets by ten to twenty-five percent. This will allow for programmatic changes in the event that the economic effects of the pandemic persist. Despite the current disastrous economic environment, the town is well positioned to continue operations and to provide the essential services that residents need. But it is important we remain as flexible as possible. We do not know what tax collection rates will be in the coming months. The upcoming fiscal year will not provide increases in taxes to residents. As far as the school department's budget, the school committee must remain flexible as well. Online remote learning has led to significant savings, mostly in the form of transportation or lack thereof. The duration of time for which education will remain online is unknown. But as online remote learning continues, the school department budget can experience reductions in budgeted expenses. Due to the uncertainty ahead, I believe it is appropriate to move forward with the strategy as presented to us tonight by the town manager. A property tax transfer increase of two percent contingent upon the school committee transferring the savings experienced of approximately one million as a result of the lack of transportation services to the municipal undesignated fund balance. I believe this approach is balanced. It allows our budget to be conservative, but also flexible if additional need is required. I will be supporting this budget with the amendment as outlined by the town manager tonight.
Thank you, Rory. Any other comments on this amendment? All right. So all in favor of?
You want a roll call?
Yes. This, yeah, I think we all understand what this.
Go ahead.
Just one moment, please. The most on the table is to reject this amendment.
That is correct. Yes, the motion is to reject, so this would not follow the manager's recommendation.
Correct.
Are we ready?
Yes.
Council President Collins.
Nay.
Council Vice President De Cruz.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kelso.
No.
Councilman McEntee.
No.
Councilman Bealy.
Aye.
If that motion fails.
Motion fails, three against and two in favor.
Thank you, Susan. Do I hear a motion in favor of this language?
Make a motion in favor of this amendment as proposed to us by the town manager.
Second.
I guess we've probably had the discussion on this question already, but is there any further discourse?
I have, I have something to say. I just don't feel comfortable doing this in this fashion. Like I said in the meeting, I feel like we're laundering money, but that's just my personal opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Bryant. This is Abel. You know, it, you know, the, the way the money works between the budgets is, is strange. Usually it is not this fungible. I think that in this case, Rob has developed a very good working relationship with the superintendent there, which is allowing, you know, a better strategy than what we had anticipated. So I guess it's like money laundering, but money laundering really happens between different parties engaged in illicit behavior. This is really just sharing it between one account to another within one entity, you know? We tend to think of ourselves as separate from the schools, but really we're just a single organism in terms of the the town. So, you know, I, I can see the, the rationale for doing this. I think that this gives the town more flexibility when it comes budget time next year. So I, you know, I understand the reason for the amendment and I'll vote for it. Any other? All right, we can take a roll call vote.
And Council President Collins.
Aye.
Council Vice President De Cruz.
No.
Councilwoman Kelso.
Aye.
Councilman McEntee.
Aye.
Councilman Bealy.
No.
That motion carries three votes to two.
Thank you, Susan. Other amendments, I'm?
I think that that actually takes care of the amendments that must be done. Zach, am I missing anything?
So Abel, it's Mike speaking. If the next motion is going to be on the budget presented as amended this evening, we need to do one final thing, which is to have vote first minus the salary and benefit line items for the finance director. That way Deborah can vote on the budget and then after that, there'll be a second vote on that, those specific line items.
Mr. President, if I may, I just want to check with Zach and Amy. Anything we're missing? I can't think of anything other than those two structural revenue issues and the, the outside agencies. So I think that covers everything.
Yes. This is Zach. Yes, you've covered everything.
Zach, do I hear a motion to remove the line items as described as the town solicitor? Is that the motion?
Let me help, let me help. I think you can have a motion to approve the budget as amended this evening, except for the line items pertaining to the salary and benefits of the finance director.
All right, do I hear that motion?
So I will make that motion. Again, what Mike said.
Very good. Do you hear a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion second. Was that Bryant?
Yes, it was.
Okay, a motion by Deb, second by Bryant. So discussion on the budget minus.
Abel, it's Joe Bealy. This has been a long process, a confusing process and not, not just tonight. I think it's been, this has been one of the more difficult budgets that I've dealt with. I think the town or the municipal side of the town has demonstrated this year that controlling spending is, is very important and they, they, we've pulled it off. I think one of my big wants is I want an indication from the school side of the town that they're also willing to consult, to control spending and I don't see that. And I don't think that, you know, this, this plan does that. The increase in spending is still there and I think nobody can claim that this town historically had. this town historically has always adequately funded education. And it's my feeling that even at level funding this year, it would have been adequately funding our school program. I, I, I just, I just think that we need to see more of an indication that there's going to be an effort on the school side to control spending. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
So I just have a couple of comments to make. First of all, I some, someone made a comment that people haven't lived here a very long time. Well, I moved here in nineteen seventy-eight. I think forty-two years puts me in a long time. In fact, one of the places I lived was in Peacedale Flats when the trestle was still there. So I've been here a long time. And, and I've always appreciated living here and I, and I want to continue to do that and I do continue to do that. Government is here to protect the people. It's not a business. It's not about the bottom line. It's about the health and safety and well-being of all of the citizens, and that includes education. I try to make every decision from that point in my life from thinking, what does this do to the citizens? What does this do? And I think we've come up with a budget, the, the manager has come up with a budget that does not put any additional burden on the taxpayer for next year. I think that's very important. I think now with the amendments we have just passed, making sure that the undesignated fund balance remains solid is, is a big plus. I am in favor of the budget as amended and those are my reasons for that.
Any further commentary?
This is Brian speaking again. Yeah, I value everyone's opinion on the council, trust me when I say that. And I value what the school committee and the school department is trying to do as well. I just, you know, and I, I value all the work that's been put in by the town manager and by the finance department and everyone else that's worked on trying to be, becoming more creative. So there are definitely parts of the budget that I, that I like. But I, but I am concerned about what we're going to look like six months, eight months down the road. And the bottom line is that regardless of whatever budget that we pass, we're only going to have an infinite, you know, a definite amount of money at the very end of this. We don't know what that is. My hope is that we don't end up in a bad situation. But my gut tells me that there's a lot of moving parts and this is something that we don't have enough information on at the present time. I also feel strongly that we should have done the, let, let the school department keep the million plus dollars or whatever they're going to have and apply it and do level funding for a number of reasons. Rob talked about the spike in the second year. I mean, there might be a spike in the second year, but you also have time to adjust budgets over that time. And we don't know what, you know, who's retiring over a certain period of time or what other changes might, might happen. The other thing I wanted to mention is that granted, you know, we talked about emails that we had received and that was one point I was trying to make. And to the other callers' comments that there were other emails sent in, it definitely was. I've read every single one of them. I've responded to the ones that were sent to me specifically. So I am listening. I've received phone calls, messages. And one of the big things that I, that I do want to make sure that remains in this budget for the school department is their social emotional part for next year. But like I said, I just think that we're doing this probably not in the best possible way. So I would be voting no on the budget.
Thank you, Brian.
I, I just would like to make one more comment if I could. I had thought about asking or asking the town and the, and the school department to give us a detailed financial picture, maybe in early December. It might be a whole new council at that point, but the new council should see what the costs incurred are from the school department and what the costs, extra costs related to, to the, to the pandemic and maybe have a head start on, on looking to see where we can, you know, work the budget next year to make sure that the residents are again treated fairly. And maybe if we get an early look at a balance sheet, that might be a, a bonus. That's all.
I'd like to add one more thing, if that's possible. It's a thought that I had for the last couple of days. You know, we talk about trust and, and it seems like we're having some issues just from what I'm hearing or feeling. I think one thing that we might want to look at for the next year or so that we're not in this position again, so that we have a better understanding. You know, the town, the town budget's complicated to understand, but the school committee budget or the school budget is even more complicated to understand. And that's nobody's fault. And we're all trying to make the best decisions we can with how we're interpreting the communication and data that we're receiving. But maybe we might want to look from the council perspective of an independent audit for the town budget and for the school budget and then within the next year or so that, so that we know exactly and feels, you know, strongly that we're doing the absolute right thing at that point coming up. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. I, I just want to clarify. I think both the town and the schools have annual audits. We can talk about potentially making those more.
I, I'm familiar that, you know, we all have annual audits. I just think that we're not, on the town side, we're not involved on the school side in terms of the audit, just like the school side is not involved on the town side or getting information on our, on our audit. And I think we just, well, I think the school department would feel good knowing that we're using our money wisely and we would feel great just knowing that we're using, whatever the number is, that we're using the money wisely on the, on the school side is, as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Rory, I, I feel like you said your piece there. So I don't know if, if you had any final comments. You know, so building on a couple of points of the last couple of comments, you know, this year I had the the pleasure of serving on the budget subcommittee. And I, you know, I think the invitation was there for more participation from council members. I, I recommend, you know, us taking part, you know, obviously probably only have two of us there at any one point, but that might be useful. I, I thought it was instructive from my perspective, watching the building of the, of the budget over there. And I, you know, my, my personal opinion is was pretty responsible. It's a point seven six percent increase over last year's budget for the schools. You know, that's better than we can claim on the municipal side, which is the second year in a row that, you know, I think the schools have, you know, had a lower budget increase than we have. That's not to say that we have runaway spending over here. I think in general, our town does a very good job of, of being responsible. This is obviously some of the most trying circumstances that we've undergone as a municipality or as a country or even as, you know, global population. And I, you know, I've heard a, a lot through this process about a lack of trust in our government. And I think there's just a lot of, a lack of trust between people and large institutions in this era. I don't know all the causes of it, but it's disheartening from people, I think, who serve in government, who really came to this government sector to be public servants. And, you know, I, I don't see people who are motivated by conspiracies or what I see are, are people trying to provide the best services possible to our students, to the public in general. You know, I, I was born and raised here. I was born here in nineteen seventy-eight, Deb, and I went through the school system here. Not have been prouder to be a rebel and, you know, I did very well through school and I'm happy to, to be where I am still in town today. I want the children who are in the schools today, my own children as well, to, to have the same experience that I had. I know that comes with dollar signs attached to it. And that's the way we sort of see it here during the budget process. But we need, we, we should be looking beyond the dollar signs. So, you know, I just want to speak to like, I think people see a lot of bad intent out there from one side to the other. And, you know, I talk to everyone on both sides and I don't think there's bad intent on either side. Everybody's got a valuable opinion and I think we do our best to encourage civility. Sometimes we fail. I think it's a two-way street. Sometimes the public is not civil to public servants, to policymakers, and sometimes vice versa. About, you know, if, if you want to view trust and local government in terms of dollar signs and the budget process, you know, I, I think it is hard to quantify things that way. But here's one way that I, I would look at it, you know? The, the property tax rate in town is fourteen dollars and forty-five cents per thousand dollars of value for real estate, which is a one point four four percent tax rate. Now that is a, a tax rate on wealth. But if, if you're thinking about the overall value of, of real estate in town, it's increased, it increases year over year more than that one point four, four or five percent. So if you look at, you know, your tax dollars as an investment in an organization that's overseeing how property develops and is managed over time, then the investment is paying off over time. If, if you want to view it that way. So this town has kept low tax rates relative to its surrounding communities over time. It's allowed this community to develop in a way that's fiscally responsible. The people are well off. We provide good services, I'd like to think. And hopefully people can come to see those tax dollars as a good investment that pays off and a good education, good senior services, all the things that South Kingstown has to offer. I am pleased that this year the town manager has been able to devise a budget that sees no tax increase at all. I think that, you know, that's a good place to be and still preserving the services that we offer. So I'll, I'll vote for this budget as amended. If the clerk will take the role.
Yes, I will. Council President Collins.
Aye.
Council Vice President Cruz.
No.
Councilwoman Kelso.
Aye.
Councilman McEntee.
Aye.
Councilman Bealy. Joe, you muted.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The vote is three to two in favor.
Thank you, Susan. And that closes out item seven.
Actually, that doesn't enable.
Sorry, that's right.
We need one more motion to approve the line items pertaining to the finance director salary and benefits. So if someone other than obviously Deb can make that motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second. All right, we have a motion by Joe, a second by Brian. Discussion on the finance directors. All.
Susan's going to take the role.
A Council President Collins. Council Vice President Cruz.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kelso.
Recused.
Thank you. Councilman McEntee.
Aye.
And Councilman Bealy.
Aye.
I have a vote of four and one recusal that motion carries. And that brings us to eight on the agenda, communications.
Abel, I think you need Joe Veeley here. I think you need a motion to continue.
Has it gotten late?
Way past eleven. It's tomorrow.
Twelve oh five.
I'll make a, this is a Brian. I'll make a motion to continue the meeting to.
Second.
I have a motion by Brian, a second by Deb. Any discussion? All right, we'll have a roll call.
Council President Collins.
Aye.
Council Vice President Cruz.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kelso.
Aye.
Councilman McEntee.
Aye.
Councilman Bealy.
Aye.
Thank you.
You know, time flies when you're having fun. It doesn't seem like it's taking that much longer. Eight C is a resolution adopted April sixth, twenty twenty by the Barrington Town Council in support of legislation pending in the General Assembly. H seven two six four and S two one three zero, known as the Large Capacity Feeding Device Ban Act, received, placed on file. Go hear a motion.
Make a motion that we table this until the next meeting. I, I need a little more time to, to discuss this, I think, than we have this evening. So if we can put this off until the next council meeting, I'd appreciate that.
I'll, I'll second that if you promise not to do a roll call.
Yeah, I think all you have to do from here on in is ask anyone opposed and then you'll be covered.
Anyone opposed? Or then I suppose that motion carries, correct?
Correct. Yes.
Eight E is a letter dated April tenth, twenty twenty from Paul Higgins, tendering his resignation from the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, effective April twenty-second, twenty twenty.
Make a motion to accept Paul Higgins' letter of resignation from the Bike, Biped Committee. Place it on file and send a letter of thanks for his efforts.
Second.
All right, anyone opposed? Very good.
So Abel just announced that the motion passes unanimously.
The motion carries unanimously. Eight F is, yes, an email dated April fourteenth, twenty twenty from Patricia McGrath, requesting the town to consider extending the quarterly tax payment deadline without interest and penalty. Go hear a motion. Rob, do you want to speak to this before we?
So yeah, this is an area that we're going to need some assistance with. The state statutes on this point hold most of the authority on when you can extend deadlines and the state legislature or an action by the governor in the absence of that would be necessary before we can simply extend the deadlines for taxes. We need to be looking into this. Carol McEntee, Representative McEntee is aware of the difficulty that we've got and has expressed a strategy for moving forward. We'll see, you know, whether the governor's office can take action in this area or not. We know that in other areas related to taxes, the governor's office in the last couple of weeks has expressed some doubts about whether executive action will be sufficient. I don't know what the result's going to be here yet. What I would ask is that the council direct me and the finance director to follow up on this and make a report to the council at the council's next regular meeting.
I'll make a motion that the town manager and the finance director follow up on this and report back to the council at the next scheduled meeting.
Second.
Motion by Rory, second by Deb.
Joe Veeley here, just a comment or a question. Rob, we don't have another meeting before the next quarterly payment is due, so.
I may first, you're right. That's true. We.
If I may, it, it's within the.
If I may, it's within the grace period.
It is within the grace period. That's true.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I'm nervous about the timeline, though, Joe. We're just going to do the best we can.
Right.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any further comments? Or is there anyone opposed? All right, and that motion carries unanimously as well. Eight H is an email dated April eighteenth, twenty twenty from Nigel Sorensen, expressing concern with speeding motorists on Silver Lake Avenue.
I'll make a motion to place item eight H on file and refer it to the town manager's office to involve the police department, maybe the traffic review, but police department at least.
Second. Motion by Joe, second by Brian. Any discussion? Any opposed? All right, that motion also carries unanimously. And that brings us to eight J. Emails dated April twenty second, twenty twenty from Margaret McGregor, expressing concern that drainage swales being installed on Middle Bridge Road create a safety hazard for pedestrians and bicyclists. I don't know if there's anybody still around to speak to this. I'm guessing not.
I have spoken to John about it. I've been down to look at the work that's being done. She's got a valid point. It's a very difficult problem because we're under D E M direction to resolve the water mitigation problems. John and the town engineer, Rich Bourbonay, are trying to figure out what we can do to mitigate against the worst of the problem here. We are moving ahead with traffic improvements. We have, in fact, got a report that the council is now seeing from the town engineer on the stop sign study. The stop signs will be installed. In fact, you've got a notice for public, a notice of public hearing on the agenda later tonight. So the improvements are happening on Middle Bridge. Whether, whether there's a way to remedy the problem of these drainage structures is, it's not going to be an easy problem to solve because the water treatment issue is such a an impactful one for the river. It's going to be tough. But we're aware of it. She does not, her concern is valid, and we've got to figure out if there's something that can be done about it. I will say that the solution that everyone prefers would be sidewalk. Initial cost estimate of about five to six million dollars for sidewalks to remedy the problem down there. It's not going to be an easy problem to resolve.
I'll make a motion to place eight J on file and refer it to the town manager's office to continue working with Public Works. Second, Brian.
All right, we have a motion by Joe, a second by Brian. Any further discussion? Are there any opposed? All right, that motion carries as well. Eight K is an email dated April twenty third, twenty twenty from Councilman Deborah Kelso, proposing formation of a town committee focused on marketing and post COVID nineteen business recovery.
Okay, so I'm going to try to make this as quick as possible. This came out of the conversation the manager had with business owners last Thursday. It was brought up a couple of times that there's no landing page for the town to, for businesses to promote their, when they're open, what services they offer. And it was then brought up that we needed a unified message from the business community to the residents and visitors regarding how we're going to open, when, when we, when we get the opportunity to reopen and for it to be a safe place to come and shop and, and, and live and visit and dine and all of those things. So my thought was, let's take a business owner from every sector of the community and a couple at large, put them in a room and say, what are you looking for? Development of a webpage, development of some kind of a branding icon that they could use in their marketing, either physically or digitally. And try to do this as quickly as possible because we want to be up and running by mid-June. So that's why I, I'm speaking to it tonight. I'd like to put the committee together. It could be a standalone committee. We'd need a town department to be the liaison in that case, or it could be a subcommittee of the Economic Development Committee. That's not my first choice because their, their business is policymaking, not marketing. We do have the Chamber of Commerce in town. They are an advocacy and group that primarily caters to members, and that's how they're funded. And then there's South County Tourism, which is a marketing group, but they market county area as a whole. They also only specifically promote advertisers generally on their pages that, that speak to that. So we really need a town-focused spot for folks to, for businesses to join together and say, we're in this together and we're going to get out of this together.
Can I make a quick comment or do I have to wait?
Uh, well, we, yeah, no, you can make a comment now.
I was in that same meeting, and one of the thoughts I had was, again, I know that we're short on money right now, but one of the things that popped in my head was that a good investment at this point considering a position that we've been thinking about for a long time would be, would be someone to be an economic development person for the town. I don't know if that's full-time or part-time. The other thing, I think I would be okay with it falling under the Economic Development EDC as a subcommittee with, you know, different members that are currently on. Meaning not, I don't know if I put members on from that EDC or if we just put it under the, I think we should put it under the EDC with completely different members, but reporting to the EDC and the EDC reporting back to us. But that's just my personal opinion. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. I just didn't want to put the burden of marketing on a group that primarily deals with, with policy, not with.
They, 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 they were all for the economic development person a year or two ago. So I think this might be a good fit for the EDC. That way, it can, it can have, you can have more people involved in a way where you have the people that are part of the subcommittee, but then you also have people that are on the EDC that can also lend a helping hand to it as well.
All right, thanks, both Deb and Brian. Rob, what do you, could you take this conversation and develop a resolution to create a committee or subcommittee or how?
I, I see this as either an ad hoc subcommittee or an ad hoc standalone committee, but yeah, it's an easy, it's an easy charge to write up. I mean, it's, it's very, it writes itself. The charge of the committee is to investigate ways to improve the economic response to the COVID nineteen, you know, then marketing. It's, it's pretty easy. Yes.
All right, then it might be in order to make a motion to send this to Rob in pursuit of developing a resolution for that.
My, my only concern would be time is of the essence here. So I don't want to push this off to the eleventh to get a resolution, then advertise. I mean, we're into the summer by the time we're helping the summer businesses at that point.
So Mike, then, is it possible to pass sort of a generic resolution and leave the development of the committee structure to?
No. Done with the budget. Done with the budget.
I, I think we could.
Yeah, go, go ahead, Rob.
I think we could do this as a generic charge. If the, if the town council were to pass a resolution tonight saying the town wants to create an emergency ad hoc committee to address economic recovery from the COVID nineteen event, and the manager is directed to establish such a committee and to advise the council of the persons who are on the committee. And you guys can approve it, you know, the list at that point. We can pull all the names together and we can get the committee built. And then you guys on the eleventh have sort of a veto power on it.
Could we add more people at that point?
Absolutely.
I'd be in favor of the motion. Well, not that he made the motion, but the wording, the manager's comments for the motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, we got a motion from Brian, a second from Rory. Any further discussion? None. Are there any opposed? All right, that motion carries. I look forward to seeing that committee get to work. Item nine is comments from interested citizens. Roberta, are you still there with your hand up? If so, could somebody bring Roberta into the meeting? And anybody else who would like to speak now during public comment, if you want to raise your hands, please do.
She should be joining you any second.
Roberta, you are muted at the moment. Just unmute yourself.
Sorry, I was in the other room that I did not have my hand up. So sorry about that.
I'm sorry to trouble you at this late hour. All right, any comments from council members? All right, leave those to next time. Item eleven, appointments, I think. Interviews.
I'm sorry, are you on appointments?
Yeah, but don't we need to do?
Yeah, the only, the only point I was going to make was the zoning board, we don't have somebody who's up for reappointment, but the alternate situation, we could act on tonight. So I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Marx. Bill, Bill Mark, who is the alternate one to fill the vacancy and also to appoint William Rosen to be alternate one. He's now alternate two. That's my motion.
All right, do I hear a second?
I'll second because I want to make a comment. I'm, I, were we not going to interview people?
This is, but this isn't someone who's up for reappointment. This is because there's a vacancy and the alternates typically move up when that happens.
I, I, I hear you, but I thought we would try to take the typically out of this. So I think I'd be in favor of, I don't know whether I'm in favor of Bill Mark, but I'd love to interview him, have him come before us, or if he can zoom, that'd be great. And, and the same thing with Mr. Rosen. We're moving them, and I think we just passed the intent to interview prior to appointing.
Okay.
All right, well, we will. Susan, if you could invite Mr. Mark and Mr. Rosen to come back for an interview, that would be great.
Mr. President, if I may, I just will take this opportunity to let the council know that we are hearing from the housing authority that operating with three instead of five members is causing them some difficulty.
Yes, we should prioritize. I mean, we have conducted interviews for the board there recently. You know, our, this council here. So I don't know if we feel empowered to to move on any of the people who are still on the list, or if we want to seek new applicants as well. Guess that would be.
I think we should seek new applicants as well, but they are running with only three currently, right, Rob? So that's a concern as well.
There's a couple of new applicants there that we have not interviewed as well, so.
Correct.
Can we put them on?
His concern, but maybe we need to interview the two new folks and then make the decision.
Susan has reached out to the two new folks, and have they indicated they are available for Zoom interviews, Susan?
They are capable of doing a Zoom meeting, yes. Would you like me to invite the two new applicants for May eleventh as well as the two zoning board members that you're seeking to move up?
I would, please.
Okay.
Okay. Town managers report.
I'll keep this very quick. First of all, thank you. This was a very difficult budget season, and I appreciate all of your patience and tolerance for our thinking outside of a box that we sort of saw as broken. So it was not easy, and we appreciate your patience with us. We will execute this budget very carefully. We are not going to find ourselves in trouble because we didn't anticipate every possibility. We'll make sure that as, as things change, we keep the council informed and we do what's responsible. Other than that, really, the big news in the last couple of weeks has been down on Middle Bridge. We've had some major construction going on for water drainage, and we have got the review back from the town engineer indicating that the signage, the stop signs on Middle Bridge, not on Torrey Road, but on Middle Bridge at Torrey Road, Torrey Hill, Torrey Road. Do meet the warrant and the recommendations from the town engineer to put those traffic signs, those stop signs in place. We are also ordering, I don't know if John actually got the bid documents out, but he's also ordering the signs for speed feedback. So there's some progress being made down there. And that'll end it for me tonight.
Thank you, Rob. Any questions for Rob? All right, we'll leave those for next time, too. That'll take us to new business. Twelve A is a resolution adopting the town beach policy for the twenty twenty season, as shown on exhibit two, attached to the agenda with a stipulation that future amendments may be necessary for adherence to COVID nineteen restrictions and further described in a memo from the Director of Leisure Services to the town manager.
Mr. President, if I may, having spoken to Terry earlier today, her recommendation as of this afternoon, because she had a conversation with the state and has to talk to folks locally, is that we continue this to the next meeting.
Motion to continue twelve A. Second.
We have a motion by Joe, a second by Brian.
A second was not by me.
Oh, sorry, that was Rory. I look away for a second. It's sometimes it's hard to tell the difference. We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All right, are there's anybody opposed? All right, then that motion carries. Twelve B is a resolution authorizing the town manager to execute a national grid energy initiative application for LED lighting retrofit project at the senior center using the national grid on bill repayment option, further described in a memo from the Leisure Services Director of the town manager. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve item twelve A as, I mean, twelve B, sorry, as presented.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All right, any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. That brings us to twelve D. A resolution authorizing an award of bid to TCI Press of Seekonk to provide brochure printing services in accordance with all bidding specifications for an amount not to exceed nine thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars and nine thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars for this year and next year, respectively, further described in a memo from the Leisure Services Director to the town manager.
I'll make a motion that we approve item twelve D.
Second.
I have a question. I don't know if it's for Rob or if Terry's, I think Terry's still here, but so these brochures are for the upcoming summer.
So this is a two-year contract, and she actually has this year's brochure being done. So, oh, there she is. So I'll let Terry finish.
You're, you're muted still, Terry. Now you're good. Now you're muted again.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep.
Sorry about that. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning. Good morning.
So the, the, the brochure contract is for a full year. It's for seasonal brochures over the course of the year. So this is for a two-year bid award. Does that answer your question, Joe?
So actually, the, the real question I have is if it's the summer brochure, or I imagine it's the summer brochure, correct?
It's, the, the, the first brochure would be for the summer, yes, but the summer, fall, winter, spring.
So the, all right, so are we likely to need the summer brochures? That, I guess that's my point.
So if, we are, we are working on the assumption that there will be some summer programming. We don't know at this point what that will look like. And in that case, the brochure would probably be less pages, quite possibly, with lower printing costs.
Okay, great, good. It's, I'm not surprised you guys are on it.
Thanks.
Did we have a motion or?
Yeah, I think. I made a motion.
Yeah. Made the motion and then seconded it.
I don't remember.
No, I, I'll take second.
All right, we'll say Bryant made the motion and Deb seconded it.
Yes, I did.
All right. No further comments. Anybody opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimously. And twelve E is a resolution authorizing the town manager to execute five-year warranty and network contracts with Vol Trek of Massachusetts and the regional charge point agent for the town's electric vehicle charging stations in an amount not to exceed nine thousand four hundred and ten dollars and author, authorizing a fee of two dollars and twenty-five cents per hour to be charged for consumer use of the public EV stations.
So this is the charge points that we have down in the center of Wakefield. These were put in with a state grant. It cost us no, nothing to install them. We do, however, have to maintain them over time, and the maintenance agreements cost money. One of the things that we talked about over the course of the last several months is the fact that we're also paying for the electricity currently. We've set the price at this two dollars and fifteen cents for the purpose of recapturing the cost of the electricity and covering the cost of the maintenance on these, these devices as well. So if we are correct about the number of hours that we can continue to expect people to use these things, and the rate is correct, we will not have a cost. It'll be a net zero cost to the town to maintain them. But they will require, it will require that users of the system start paying.
So, so Rob, Joe Veely, I have a question. So you're basing your, your, your guess or your estimate on past usage?
Past usage and conversation that, conversations that Mark Russo has had with others who operate these things.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second, Bryant.
By Joe, a second by Bryant. Any further discussion? Any opposed? All right, that motion carries, and that actually brings us to the end of tonight's agenda. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Bryant, second by Deb. Any conversation about this one?
Good night.
Thank you.
This motion carries. Thank you all for, for bearing with us, for whoever's still watching, and for the town staff who stayed with us. You know, hopefully, we don't have to go through too many more of these. Have a good night.
Thank you. Good night.